No, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we do just for adoption of the resolution.
Okay, so I guess Claudia will start.
Looking for George.
Oh, I see, I saw. I thought I saw his name on the screen for a second.
He's there, he's on the screen with his face and his name.
Well, I don't see him.
I don't see him either.
I do too, I see him.
Oh.
Don't you have a gallery view, alley view?
Yeah.
Wait, George, are you there?
We see Jim, but we don't see George, we're trying to find George.
That's right.
There's Lisa.
Okay.
Lisa's here.
All right, let's get started.
Okay, I'm gonna. Lisa, can we start?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, all right. Okay. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on October 27th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Placaticwood Notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on October 22nd, 2021, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times and was filed with the clerk of the, the clerk of the, of the Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices, such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay. So Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
Driver?
Here.
Mr. Cannonbaum?
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Stein?
I'm here.
Donna?
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Okay, we have, we're gonna start with the resolutions, our first resolution is 229 Pretty Burke Road, Block 3501, Lots 6 and 7 in the R1 Zone. The resolutions were included in your packets and if you have reviewed them and have any questions, please ask. If no one has any questions or someone would like to make a motion, please do.
I move that we approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
I have a, a minor correction on this.
Okay.
Um, just the first whereas, right at the end, it says, uh, published on September 4th, 2021.
Oh, you're right.
Should be 2020.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, all right, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Driver?
Yes.
George?
George?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution is 160 Patton Avenue, Block 53.07, Lot 107 in the R2 Zone. Once again, this is in your packet. If anyone has any questions, please ask. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I move it.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Davich.
Okay, Claudia, call the roll, please.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, the last resolution is 22 Edge Hill Street, Block 5601, Lot 10 in the R1 Zone in the Mercer Hill Historic District. It's in your packet, if there are any questions, please ask. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I so move.
Thank you.
Sorry, who's second?
It was a tie. Davich will take it.
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have several applications this evening. The first one is a carryover from our last, I think it was our last hearing, maybe it was a hearing before. 269 South Harrison Street, Block 11002, Lot 51 in the E1 Zone. Derek, do you want to, well, I guess you need to be sworn in, yeah, you go.
That's right. Mr. Bridger, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes ma'am, I did, thank you. Good evening, board members. So we last heard this application on August 27th and it was carried to this meeting. The applicant wanted some more time to explore some alternate designs and they have proposed two designs. One is a rear yard parking scheme that does not require any variances. And then they've also revised the front yard parking plan, which does require variances. It requires a side yard setback variance. The proposed side yard will be three and a half feet and the requirement's 15. And it requires a front yard parking setback variance. The proposed, if the requirement's 25 feet and the proposed is 11 feet, nine inches. The project will create more than 400 square feet of net new impervious coverage and a stormwater management plan is required. And the applicant's seeking consideration under the C1 and C2 criteria, excuse me. You have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I have, I do have a question, don't we, we should have the applicant basically pick a scheme?
I would let the applicant, I mean, they, they put those two schemes in there for a reason. So I think maybe let them have their presentation, I think it'll, it'll become clear when we, we hear that.
No, no problem at all.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't know who from.
Why don't we swear you in, are you going to begin?
Uh, yes, I am.
All right, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And you are a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, correct?
I am, yep.
All right, and Mr. and Mrs. Pile will swear you in too now. If you would both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Okay, so if the board recalls, we were here in August and we had presented a driveway plan for a circular driveway at 269 South Harrison Street. The reason for the two plans, Mr. Chairman, is I think there was some concern on the part of the board. If there was an alternate means that we could achieve the, the same objective of having the ability for the piles to pull straight head out into South Harrison Street, which the loop driveway would achieve. And if I can just share my screen real quick. So this plan, this was a proposed driveway concept plan that I prepared, it was prepared on October 13th. This was based off of the property survey. So if you recall, we had some hand sketches that Mr. Pile himself had prepared. So what I did was put this on the computer and, and just put a little finer point on it in terms of distances and the width of the driveway. So what we've proposed in our revised concept are, yeah, proposed driveway concept plan here was we're maintaining the circular drive, but we've narrowed the width of that circular area. We've pulled it another half a foot off of the northern property line. Here you can see that dimension. Just zoom in here a little bit, of 3.6 feet, maintaining separation of 10 and a half feet down at the, at the throat of the driveway. And we've lined this up with the existing curb cut that you can see here. We've provided this at 18-foot width across the top here. That will allow us to park two cars side by side up near the garage. And the result of this plan in terms of impervious coverage, the existing impervious coverage on the site is about 2,135 square feet. The existing driveway accounts for about 553 feet of that. With the additional driveway area to achieve the loop and then a connecting walkway to the front stoop, that's a total addition of about 696 square feet. So the net increase here is 696. As Mr. Bridger had noted, I'm showing the 25-foot front parking setback here along the eastern property line and then the 15-foot side yard parking setback on, on both sides. Let me just switch to the other plan that we submitted.
Mr. Kyle, we'll just call the one you just showed us, we'll call that Exhibit A1, okay?
Okay, and I assume this will be A2?
Correct.
Okay, so A2 is an alternate driveway concept. And what we did here was create a, a parking area in the rear for three automobiles. And this would provide the ability, obviously, for someone to pull into the driveway, park in the back, and then they would be able to back in and then proceed headfirst out. So with eliminating the existing driveway of 553 square feet, we would have to install a new walk in this scheme as well to get out to the driveway and then down to the street. Uh, and then the net increase with this one, with this additional pavement is about, I'm sorry, the new driveway in the walk is that's 1,896 square feet. The net increase on this scheme is 1,343 square feet. One thing I did want to note, there are two existing trees that are located just off the southeast corner of the dwelling that would need to be removed in order to effectuate this. So just to kind of satisfy the board's curiosity about a potential alternative, I, I think just comparing the two alternatives, obviously, this alternative involves a, a much larger increase, net increase in impervious surface on the site. I think the burden with this plan, while it could be achieved, is that it's gonna move all the parking to the rear which is less desirable to the piles just based on the existing configuration of the dwelling. Obviously, there is an entrance to the rear, but their preference would be to have the parking in the front and access through the front and then through the garage as needed. The other issue with this is with this increase, so rather than attenuating a net increase of 696 square feet, we would have to now attenuate an increase of 1,343 square feet. So under the, the municipality's stormwater management code, we, we would have to address that because it's over 400 square feet, uh, net increase. So obviously, that involves a little bit more in terms of infrastructure to treat that stormwater. And then along with the removal of the, of the trees along the front here, we felt that this option was less desirable from, from those perspectives. The other thing we talked about, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna ask, you're, you're removing the existing driveway. Obviously, the garage is still there and there'll be, are you gonna take out the garage? You gonna do any work to change the nature of the garage?
Well, as Mr. Pile had testified at the last hearing, that there's no intent to do that now. It's possible that that could happen in the future, but his intent was to keep it as a garage. So obviously, for the time being, we would have, you know, a grass area leading up to a garage door that, that wouldn't really have any function.
Okay, you, would you remove the curb cut?
If we were to go with the alternate scheme?
If you were to go with this scheme, yes. Would you remove the existing curb cut?
I, I think we would have to, because we would essentially be replacing the, the curb cut here with, with the curb cut here.
Okay, all right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I, I think I just wanted to offer the board the comparison. As I said, this is obviously a less desirable option for my client. This is a little more costly, it's more pavement, it's also a lot more stormwater attenuation that would have to be handled. And we think, just quickly going back to A1, the board had expressed some concern over having cars parked on a regular basis in the circular drive. I think there's some things that we can do to soften that. There could be some landscaping installed in this, in this U here to kind of hide that edge. The other thing is 98% of the time, it's, it's just gonna be Mr. and Mrs. Pile parking their cars here at this location. Two vehicles that can easily be parked up near the garage. And again, the goal of this proposal is just to give them the ability to be able to back up, circulate headfirst onto this, you know, pretty busy section of street. I don't want to recant all the testimony for the board, but you know, it's about 11,000 or 12,000 cars a day that drive by the front of this house. And, and you know, Har, South Harrison's a, a major connector from Route 1. Uh, it's, it's something that they feel is unsafe for, for them, given the proximity to the intersection. So their preference would be, you know, from this perspective, I think this is a little easier to attenuate, attenuate the stormwater. It's a little less costly in terms of the amount of pavement. And again, I think they would be willing to, you know, install some landscaping or otherwise address, you know, the potential visual impact. Even a restriction that, you know, I know, I realize it's, it's hard to enforce, but you know, that you have their commitment that 98% of the time, the cars will be parked over on the right-hand side of the driveway and not in, in the loop in the front. But that's not really their intention.
I thought we had discussed a sort of a, a little hybrid of this scheme that you have up on the screen where you would park in the garage and let's say that circular drive would be cut in half, so that would basically be give you the ability to make a K-turn, you know, pull up in front of the garage, back into this, and then go out facing forward through the existing driveway.
Yeah, we, we had talked about a K-turn. The, the issue with that, Mr. Chairman, is that if you have two cars that are parked side by side and the outboard car wants to make that maneuver, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to do because you would have to back, you would essentially have to make multiple movements down and then forward and then back in order to get out. Obviously, if there's not another car there, it's a little easier to do, but for the most part, they have two vehicles parked in, in the driveway most times. So it does create a little bit of a practical issue there.
But it cuts down the amount of paving significantly.
Uh, it would, it would probably cut that additional driveway and walk, I mean, it might cut it more than in half and it might actually get it under 400 square feet of, of net increase.
Okay, I mean, I, I recognize that this, the, the other scheme has, I have it up on the screen here, has a significantly more complex paving situation. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's cleaner from the street, but it has, but you created a lot of impervious coverage.
Yeah, and it is.
Another thought?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
With this plan, as Mr. Kyle has presented here, the alternative, it also poses a problem with remediating for the stormwater because the grade of the property runs from the left to the right, or I should say from the upper to the lower part. The water flows from above down below and the remediation prospect for the stormwater would be where that driveway is at the moment, whether it's a rain garden or a cistern. So that driveway is unfortunately also, in that particular place, uh, on the wrong side of the property from the water flow point of view. The water is flowing down from higher up into the driveway and inhibiting the ability for a rain garden or other remediation, as I suppose.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask this question going back to Steve's question about the, the hybrid concept? If you widened the, the, the part near the, the garage from 18 feet, you know, add a, a couple more feet to that, that would help with the backing out of the outside car, right? Adding a couple more feet there, you, you have three and a half.
It would potentially, and what I'll do is let me just 20 feet. So if I measure from, and essentially a car's not gonna be right on the face of the garage. So if we took it, you know, say from a foot in, and then of course, it's giving it too many miles, I don't want that. So right, right about where the, the end of that, that red line is, is about 18 feet and that's kind of a standard parking stall, nine by 18. Most cars aren't 18 feet in length, you know, you might be a more compact car, subcompact might be, you know, 15, 16. So you can see where that line extends to, you can imagine trying to then take the car and back, you know, you would, you would essentially be running right into this area here and you would have to pull forward again and then back up again and then be able to pull out. So this, this configuration allows either car to simply back down into the, kind of the mouth of the driveway and then just proceed to pull forward and straight out. Kind of eliminates a lot of extra movements that would be necessary, you know, particularly for the inward car.
But if, if you did that, you also wouldn't need, necessarily have to have that curve exactly how it is, the, the semicircle. You could massage that a bit to, to make that, uh, to make that work.
It, it could be widened, but I think essentially what we would be doing here is, is whereas now we can have the loop kind of pushed, you know, about 11.9 feet away from the edge of the property, it would have to be moved in an easterly direction and get closer to the road in order for that to, to be able to function, for both cars to be able to pull. Essentially, what you'd be doing is putting that, that kind of K-turn area right here very close to the property line.
If I may comment on that point, I have tested with both of our cars, driving on the lawn to prove it, that even when you start with the note, the front of the car touching the garage door, backing the car up into the K-turn car pad, requires the car to travel down the driveway at least two-thirds or three-quarters of the roadway to the street. So it is a four, uh, it's a four-move maneuver, not a two-move maneuver. And, uh, it would be complicated with, of course, another car in the driveway as well. We are, I, I just may say, I think the obvious point for us as septuagenarians here is being able to get in and out of this property safely, that's my main concern. This is a dangerous street to be on and, uh, I just want to be able to head into the street easily to gain access without worrying about the trailer trucks that are coming down the road at 40 miles an hour at 4:30 in a November night when we can't see clearly. And likewise, the parking, you can see the parking, uh, slot indicator just to the left of the driveway. That's now occupied frequently by visitors to the apartment building next to us who are somewhat regular visitors. We don't have parking in front of our house and that kind of a parked car situation also obscures our view backing into the busy Harrison Street.
Well, there's no question about it, going into the street forward, it makes significantly more sense. It's a matter of how you get there.
Right.
I, if I may ask, I, I know that you talked about also wanting to provide for workmen or, you know, an additional vehicle at some point. And I'm just, I'm, I don't know, I don't have the geometry clear as to whether or not, if there were, that both of their, I mean, not that we're, not that every house has the ability to also, you know, have guests or workers, you know, taken care of. But the wor, the, that's a tough road, as you say. And I'm wondering if there were, both of you, both, both cars were parked, you know, up against the garage and then there was a painter. Would that person have any chance of being able to do a K-turn to get out if there, if it was a cut in half instead of a U? It, it, it's, my gut feeling is it wouldn't be possible. So I know that we talked about that as another thing that you all were concerned about was being able to accommodate, since there's not parking on Harrison.
Well, I'll respond to that. The garage is usable and my wife would prefer to park in the garage so that even when there's a car parked there, that would create more space for a third vehicle that would need to service the property. It would also still require, however, that the second car be parked aside from the, uh, direct line from the garage to the street so that either car can still get out. So in terms of the width of the driveway, we still hope to achieve that. But we take your point, I think if I hear the sentiment of the board, this concern about over-parking on the front lawn. So we take that point to heart and Mr. Kyle has said it correctly. We're two 70-year-olds here who are, we're not party animals, who are not running a restaurant. We're just trying to get on and off this property safely and then be able to have the quiet enjoyment of the rest of the property. So we have to make accommodations, I suppose, because we don't have legal parking in front of the house. That is where parking up the side of the street will come into play, I suppose. If there needs to be an urgent service person to get on and off the property, I guess they can flash their lights and park illegally in front of the house. So we take to heart your concern about the appearance of parking on the, on the lawn. That is not our intent. When I draw, drew the plans the first time around, I thought that might be something that we ought to think about because we're trying to plan for the rest of our lives in this house. But never mind, our main concern is to get in and out of this, on, on and off this property safely, front-first into the street and do so without adding enormous extra cost and changing the fundamental configuration of the property, which is to say, putting a driveway on the wrong side of the house away from the garage and making it more difficult to solve the attendant stormwater management problems.
Uh, uh, let me just be more direct, the que, I actually was asking a question, which was that if both of your cars were parked next to each other, if you spoke, I, would it be, how, would it be possible for a painter's truck to pull in there kind of in front of you, I'm pointing it, I can't, I don't have a pointer to use, but yeah. And would that, would there be any ability for that vehicle to head out front-first, I, I just don't know?
Yeah, so the end of the slide, the end of the slide, Ms. Coulson, that, that's, that's 18 feet from the face of the garage, so you can see that.
It seems like it would be hard, but I, I, I don't know.
We kind of move that line over to the edge of the pavement, which would be the end of the car. There's almost 12 feet clear between the back end of that car and the edge of the circular driveway. So that, that would be more than sufficient room if a, a van or a pickup truck needed to pull into the driveway and, and get to the front here.
Yep.
That would be sufficient.
I know they could come in, but if, if, as a few have said, well, why not cut that U in half? Would it be possible for that painter to back up and go out frontways into, would, would be a dangerous street for a 30-year-old, I'd say.
It, it, it's possible that if this were widened out a little bit more, you could back into, you know, kind of this, the northeast corner here and then pull straight out, but you know, it would still be a few movements in order to do that. So I think this really just provides honestly the most efficient parking scheme where we can have two cars normally parker, one in the garage and, and one on the side and then allows a, a car to easily back up and, and circulate out without multiple movements. It's really the most efficient way to handle it.
Right. Thanks, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Pile, do you want to say anything else or can I open this up to the board members?
Yes, I guess I would say, uh, we look for guidance from the, we look for permission from the zoning board to continue with this, confident that we can then work with Mr. Bridger and his team and take all of his full advice as to the particulars of this. We presume we would follow with specific plans for the actual layout, that is a design issue that I would immediately take on. As well as work with the, um, township engineer to get the stormwater management correct. So I have full confidence in Mr. Bridger to guide the process and to, uh, faithfully execute whatever you decide, hoping that you will. Indeed, permit us to proceed here with the general concept.
Okay. All right, um. Mr. Piled, you, uh, Mr. Kyle, do you want to say anything?
Uh, I do not. Just to remind the board, the relief that we're seeking tonight is related to the side and front yard parking setback. We actually were able to pull this driveway about another half a foot away from that northern property line there. I think we reduced the impervious coverage over what the board saw in the initial sketch that Mr. Pile had submitted. Uh, so we have been able to reduce that. Um, so it's front yard parking setback and also side yard parking setback. And again, we're in the E one district. Li- little bit of an anomaly because we have a, uh, basically a single family use in the E one district. So these standards are really geared towards the E one, not necessarily the same that would be in, uh, in the residential district. So.
I would just like to ask Mr. Kyle a quick question. Wouldn't the alternative driveway that you propose also require variance? Because it would, it would bust the, uh, the side setback on the other side of the property.
Well, I think Mr. Bridger can weigh in here, but I think the actual driveway itself is treated differently than the actual area where the parking occurs. Is that true?
That is, yes, uh, Mr. Kyle, that is correct. Um, if this was in a, a regular residential zone, there is a setback. Between three and five feet be, for a driveway, but it does not, it, it was not applied to the E one zone. So this complies.
I see.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, are there any questions from the board member?
I, I have one question. I, 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 I like this plan. I'm just curious. How many bedrooms are there in this house?
Excuse me, Steve, Steve, which plan you like?
Oh, the, uh, this proposed, well, the one we're looking at right now.
Oh, the circular drive in the front.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm wondering how many bedrooms there are.
There are three.
Thank you. And what I was looking at is someday you're going to sell this property. And if it were a four or five bedroom house, you could expect to have three or four cars someday. But probably not with a three bedroom house. Thank you.
All right. Any other board members have any questions? Comments?
Just a, a small.
Sorry, Michael. Go ahead.
Small question, um. The driveway entrance on the circular is twelve feet, uh, I mean, eleven, eleven feet, I believe.
Yes.
And, and why is the driveway entrance on the other option? Twelve.
So, Mr. Floyd, we, we had initially, the, the sketch that Mr. Pile had initially submitted had a wider driveway. And we actually narrowed it down to eleven in order to get the, um, the impervious coverage down slightly and then also increase the setback. So I think, you know, twelve feet is, is a nice, comfortable drive width. I mean, I, I've seen them obviously as, as narrow as ten. Um, but twelve just kind of felt like the, the right width, um, to, you know, to safely access it. And also provide the ability, if anybody was, let me just go to the alternate sketch here. Uh, just to also provide the ability for someone, you know, extra width here in case a car is coming in, somebody's coming down the driveway. It just makes it a little more comfortable in terms of access. I mean, if we took, you know, if we narrowed that driveway to eleven feet, that might, um, get rid of, let's see. Keeps doing it that way.
Eleven by roughly fifty.
It's about fifty-five. So you're, you're really only eliminating about fifty-five square feet of, of impervious.
Yeah.
Cause we need this width up here in order, we would need that width in order for a car to be able to make that backing movement and then pull forward.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, um, anyone else? Uh, any other board members have any questions?
Well, as I, as I start, it's not a question. As I said, I, I do like the first plan. I. It just makes sense to me. It seems like. They've been a good last time to, was narrow it down and, you know, I, I. To me, it seems like a good plan.
I don't totally disagree with that, Eve. The, the, but I think in the last, in our first hearing. Part of the concern was the amount of paving in the front yard. And also, you know, how the stormwater really would be handled for all of that. Um, there was a time that a little semi circular green area. Um, between the drive and the street would be a rain garden and we didn't know how we were, you know, how the water would actually get in there. But, um. I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you. I like the, I like this scheme a little better. It's, it's. A bit more inconsistent with the rest of the block, you know, the parking. As you go down the block is all either alongside the house and the back of the house and this. You know, we get to this and we've got a big paved area in front. Um, although this property, this is a little more unique given its location. Um, and near the light and, uh, it is a very busy street. So. I don't disagree with you. I don't really like, I mean, it just seems to be a lot of paving to get to the back. But it leaves the front more intact, except we have a garage door now with, with no drive to it.
And I, I don't really see the trees on that side that were, but I would, I would hate to lose two trees. And then I, the idea of the stormwater going, you know, rushing right down to where it, it can't be mitigated. Because that's where the paving would be, doesn't seem like a situation. If, if it were, if we, if we approved the other plan where it's going alongside the property. If I, if I felt like there was a way to cut that U in half. And that would work, but it seems. I mean, I'm somebody who really is pretty concerned about, you know, over paving, but somehow this, this plan seems. It seems to make sense to me. It seems like they've, they've done. So it's just my thought.
I, I think it's a lot of, uh, paving and I'm imagining e- even with assurances that the current owners would not. Uh, clutter it with cars. It, you know, i- i- this house could end up being rented to. Three graduate students with three cars, you know, in the future. It's, it's hard to know what would happen, uh, in the future. So I, I have a hard time with that, that much paving and potential parking in front of the house.
Okay. Any other board comments? Okay, um, I'm going to open it up to the public for comment at this point. Is there anyone in the audience, uh, who would like to make a comment? Claudia?
Chairman, Chairman Cohen, I think, uh, George Stein wants to talk.
Oh, I didn't, uh, sorry, George.
Do you want me to stop sharing the screen, Mr. Chairman, so everybody can see each other?
Good idea. Please keep the screen.
Oh, you want me to put it back, I'll put it back up.
Yeah. Okay. Basically, it's, this is ghost is eliminating half of the, the curve. Um, and it has to do with the fact that right across the street from where I live, uh, there are people who have a little pocket. On which they park. If you change the parking orientation ninety degrees, then within that, um. Half curve, you could pull in two cars and they have enough space to sort of back out and make a K-turn and exit. And that would reduce the, the impervious thing by cutting off part of that, uh, curved section. You, you will definitely have two cars, you know, in the front of the house, which you're going to have anyway.
Not an eleven feet.
Well, the point is, you know, you, I, as it happens, the people across the street have some very nice shrubs that mask the, the visual effect. Um, but they go in and out all the time. Um, there is a common driveway of which this is awful. In, right in front of where we are and would be, uh. The analog would be the, the section comes right off of Harrison, which is fairly broad. So I believe you could physically have two cars parked parallel to Harrison. In a sort of side pocket and then have enough space to make a K-turn. And I would be interested if Mr. Um, if Mr. Kyle could address the geometry of the situation.
Yeah, I, I get your point, Mr. Stein. I think that, that could be achieved. Um. I think what it does though is then puts two cars side by side, kind of right in front of the house in, in a little bit more of a prominent view. So it would, it would create kind of a different situation, but it would, you know, it would give you the ability to eliminate this portion and. You know, I can't say that the geometry wouldn't work. I guess I, I just question, um, given the comments that we've heard. Uh, about the concern over, you know, cars being parked in the loop if. That would almost be kind of worse to have two cars parked right in front of the house in a space where we were. You know, trying to limit parking, let's say. But I, I, I can't say that the geometry would not work. I think there would be a way to design something that, that would work in the fashion that you've described.
Mr. Kyle, wouldn't that affect the aesthetics of the house though? To have two cars parked like that? That's, I think the intent that, uh, we were trying to avoid here.
I, I mean, it would, yeah.
Yes.
Can, can I, uh, a- ask one thing? If, uh, i- i- if when you pulled in, i- if the issue is that the second car. Has a difficult time making the turnaround. If when you pull in, you, you back up and always back into your spot. So you're always pulling out forward, then doesn't that a- address the problem? Because the, the, the first car will always take the, the more difficult spot to pull into. And then the second car, uh, takes the easier spot and you're always pulling out forward. You, you do your turn. You, you always do your turn when you arrive. So you're not struggling to back up and do a, a turn leaving when there's a second car there.
So in other words, you're saying pull, pull in and immediately to the left and then.
And back up. Yeah. And so, yeah, and the first car always takes whatever you consider to be, you know, the more difficult spot. And the second car takes the easier spot.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is we, we would have to put that K-turn area or that, um, pull in. Would have to be fairly close to the sidewalk in order to maintain the ability. To have both cars be able to make that movement. So I get your point. If, if the first car in always takes the outboard space and then backs in. The, the only thing I would say is that in order for that vehicle that's pulling in second. To be able to make that movement, we would have to just extend it down in order for the turning radius to be accommodated to get the second vehicle in there. So we, we probably have to extend it out almost to where the eleven foot nine. So basically about half the, the distance here. And then it would have to be down closer to the sidewalk in order to accommodate both, both movements.
Right. But you could, you, you eliminate, you know, that whole other side of the pavement. Yeah.
But it only works, it only works if everybody is out of there and everybody comes back in. You know, if, if the middle car leaves during the day and the other two stay, I mean, it's, it's, it's a puzzle. And so it, it's going to be complicated.
Right. What, what if you require that one of the cars always goes in the garage? You're not always a co- trying to accommodate two cars side by side.
Exactly.
Parking. You just have one car always goes in the garage. So you're really only having to. Your maneuvering becomes a little bit easier because you're not always having to accommodate going around another, a second car.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's, it's supposed to be exceptional that there are three cars. So in those instances, then, yeah, maybe it just gets managed with. The garage.
My friends, may I just suggest, in five years, I'm going to be seventy-five and my wife will be seventy-eight. And on a rainy night or a snowy night, I'm hoping that we don't have to be juggling cars, uh, to get one in and one out. We're just trying to get the easiest and safest way to get to the street at first. Um, I wish I could say that, uh, we could reduce the, uh, impervious cover, but we will remediate. With the stormwater management plan under the direction of the township and, uh. I think we just have to be practical. Testing this concept, the backing into the K port with both a Honda Civic and a Volvo XC ninety. Both of a small car and a big car, uh, attests to the improb- the difficulty of the making the maneuver. Because of the turning radius required, uh, the space between the garage and the street is thirty-five feet. And it, uh, takes about two thirds to three quarters of that to affect a full quarter turn, uh, such that one could get. And at a ninety degree angle going headfirst into the street. So I, I, I am. Uh, uh, it's unfortunate, I guess, that we have to propose something that has a loop in it, but it's the safest way to address what is a. Uh, dangerous problem for an elderly couple.
Mr. Kyle, I had one quick question for you. Is the applicant proposing then, if the board? Proves one of these concepts to come back now with actual plans, also showing where the stormwater management. Facility would be located on the property?
If, if that's required, I, I think our thought was, um, you know, it, it's going to be a fairly small system, given, you know, the limited attenuation. We have to en- engage in. So the hope was that, um, if the board felt comfortable, if we could work with staff to come up with that. Obviously, Mr. Pile's going to have to have some permeability testing done and.
Yes.
And some engineering done. And then the thought was if you were comfortable with that, um, we would work with the engineering department to have that approved. I mean, if the board would like to see it, I mean, uh, we're happy to bring it back.
Also happy if Mr. Bridger thinks it should be reviewed by the board, um, after his own review. I'm happy with that as well.
Well, personally, I would, I would, uh. I don't have a problem with, uh, with our engineering department and, and, uh, Mr. Bridger resolving the drainage issue. But that's not where we're at right now. So, um. Back to, should we, are we done? So I can go back to the public comment? Okay. So, uh, Karen, Karen, excuse me, uh, Claudia, is there anyone who's raised their hands who might want to speak?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Nope, there's nobody, no hands.
Okay, we'll give it a second here. And, uh, if we don't have anybody, then we'll close the public portion. All right. So we don't have anyone in the audience or in the public who'd like to speak. So I'll close the public portion of this hearing. And go back to the applicant and say, uh, if you want to say anything in closing, uh, that you haven't said before. That, um, uh, before we go into executive session.
No, I'm, uh, thank the board for its consideration. I thank Mr. Bridger and his staff for all the attentions they've given us as we have developed this idea. And to Mr. Kyle for helping me to, uh, visualize it and make it more precise.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So board members, um, comments, suggestions, motions? What, what do you say?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the U shape. The, it's on the screen right now.
Yeah. Well, I guess, let's, let's just, let's just discuss this for a moment, um, if we can. I went into this tonight. Um, I wasn't crazy about the circular scheme. Uh, semi circular scheme and, uh, but looking at the impact. uh, semi-circular scheme and uh, but looking at the impact of the new driveway and the parking on the side of the property. And quite frankly, the garage is going to be off to the other side with no driveway in front of it. Looks sort of foolish to me. Uh, I do recognize that you have to pull into Harrison Street straight on. You can't back into Harrison Street. It's just dangerous. I think if, subject to uh, the satisfactory resolution of the storm drainage situation for the circular drive, which quite frankly, is probably going to be less than the straight drive and the parking in the rear. I would be very comfortable with the, uh, at this point with the semi-circular drive. Which I wasn't initially.
And the motion is is, um, the motion to approve is based on this being what kind of a variance, C one or C two?
I need help with that. I don't, I'm not sure which.
Well, I guess what I'm trying, what I'm getting at is is the board's decision to approve this because you feel that this site has a exceptional um, narrowness, topography. I think I think Chairman Cohen had referenced, well, it's located close to the traffic light. Wha- what are the aspects of this that are prompting you to approve it? And is it because it's the lot itself, or are you saying more on a C two situation? And I think Mister Kyle, he did provide testimony at the last hearing. I believe, I think he kind of made both arguments. You correct me if I'm wrong about that, Mister Kyle. I thought perhaps you may have been supporting it more as a C two, but
Yeah, I I did um, address it both ways. I I think the, you know, the positioning of the existing dwelling, it was argued that kind of makes it difficult, as we talked about, to implement another, you know, like a K turn scenario. If the building were obviously farther away from the street, that might be different. Um, but I was more leaning on the C two criteria, uh, promoting health, safety and general welfare, you know, for access and and uh, safety essentially.
I I would agree with.
Yeah.
Okay, so that motion, that was your motion, Eve. Does that sound acceptable to you?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I see Derek wants to say something.
I mean, it's referencing the application, um, that this is a county road, so before we can approve any plan, you'd have to have the appropriate approval from the county to have a a street opening a- at that area. So I know you referenced it in your initial application and you spoke to the inspector and indicated that it seemed to be not a big deal, but um.
He has approved it.
He approved it without a plan? Is that correct, that he approved this without seeing any plan for it at the county?
I guess he didn't see a plan, but I did submit a
Well, he approved, he approved the concept most probably, but not the but you're still going to have to present him with the engineering.
Yeah, I reckon that's right, but yeah. I have the document he initialed and signed, uh, as he directed me to submit. And he assured me that it's approved. Um, you can be the judge of that.
I'm just saying it was something that we'll need to have before we
Yes, of course, no, no, sure, yeah.
So the conditions of approval then would be, okay, one county approval, two uh, approval by the engineering department of their stormwater management plan. Are you looking for landscaping or buffering or anything? There have been references to that because remember, you're not going to see it again. It's just going straight to staff.
Right, we are going to landscape it. Yes, that would be our intent to camouflage it as much as possible, yes.
Well, actually, Mister Mister Paul, I'm directing that question to um, the board because it's their margin, so.
I think at this point, unfortunately, unfortunately, I think at this point, we probably like the ability to see the engineering and the landscaping and the final design of this. I would think that that makes sense.
All right, well, then, then what is happening tonight then is, um, you know, the board's indicating the cir- semi-circular driveway, which I think was exhibit A.
One.
One, that is the plan they prefer. Beyond that, though, you're not voting yet to approve because you haven't seen the plans. So that's all that's happening tonight, then. You're not
Well.
you're representing to the applicant that your consensus is you're approving it. You like this design and you want to see them back. Because, I mean, we we can only go two ways. Either they come back now, they engineer it, they confirm that the stormwater management works and that the driveway can stay where it is in the front, uh, whatever landscaping, they can show you that. But we we can't do it both ways. It's
Well, I would think, excuse me, Karen, but I would think in in subject to other board members' comments, I would think that um, that I would be, I I don't want to, quite frankly, have this come back to the board for a third time. And so I would be satisfied having uh, Mister Bridger and our engineering department look at the drainage, the landscaping and and all the detail aspects of this and allowing them to approve it.
I agree.
Okay.
Can I just ask, uh, in general, um, where you would like the landscaping? Would it, I mean, there's not a lot of areas to landscape. I think maybe in the the little circular spot between the circular driveway and the street, you might be able to do some plantings there or on the sides of the circular driveway, but uh.
Yeah, just to, just to create a little, a little buffer, a little visual buffer to the drive.
Maybe the findings can reference something like that, Karen, and uh, and anything on the side, Steve, of the, that would be like, I guess, the north side?
It would be, I mean, the the drive is close to the property, on the three and a half feet, would give you the ability to put some hedges in there or something to screen it. Just something, again, to soften it to the adjacent property.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that enough guidance, Mister Kyle or Mister?
We do have, I'll just say on the northern part of that line, on the upward side of the line, there is already vegetation and there's a flowering dogwood tree there. So there is screening. We're happy to consider all possible camouflage screening. We would, however, just point out that we want to be able to see the street when we're coming into it, and we'll have to trim this in a way where we have good visibility.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that, Mister Bridger.
Thank you.
Good. Any other board comments? So we have a motion before us to approve this semi-circular drive, that scheme, um, with the condition of final approval, uh, based on the engineering and the landscaping between our engineering department and Mister Bridger. Okay. Eve, is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great.
And this would be a C two. All right, so, uh, Claudia, do you want to call a roll?
And who seconded the motion?
Who did second it?
Mister Schreiber.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Claudia.
Bolson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes.
Miss Chen?
No.
Mister Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, friends. We'll take our leave. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
Take care.
Steve, you're muted.
Sorry, um, our next hearing is uh, three thirty-eight Nassau Street, block thirty-four point oh one, lot thirty-two. This is a continuation of a previous hearing. So, uh, Mister Bridger.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the applicant at the last meeting, um, requested time to uh, have a acoustical report done on the uh, chiller and the generator. And they've come back and submitted an acoustical report by Lewis S. Godfrey and Associates, and they're also proposing a change in the location of the air chiller from the western elevation. They would propose to have it located next to the generator on the northeastern corner of the property, next to the Merrill Lynch office building on South Harrison and the adjoining office building within an apartment at three forty-two Nassau Street. Uh, the original pros- proposal called for the trash enclosure to be located in the same spaces the chiller's proposed. However, however, it's not referenced in the updated drawings. The applicant should address where trash and recycling for the building will be stored. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant has submitted an acoustical evaluation of the proposed emergency generator and the chiller from Godfrey, good good friend and associates, and the report analyzes the the chiller location and recommends the installation of a ten-foot sound barrier to enclose the generator and the chiller. The introduction of the ten-foot high acoustical fence will require a variance as the maximum height of a fence is six feet. The report measures the baseline sound pressures, will have pressure levels at the surrounding property line and analyzes sound pressures of the proposed equipment based on the manufacturing sound pressure data level. The reports of the evaluation, uh, the results of the evaluation indicate that the recommended noise control measures, um, due to the proposed generator and chiller are expected to meet the applicable uh, noise levels at the regu- at this, the nearest property line. Which is actually the property line of the adjoining residential properties on Queenston Place there. So, and that does include testing with the ten-foot um, acoustical sound dampening fence included in their analysis. That's uh, my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it. And we also have Jim Purcell, the uh, the land use engineer here tonight, um, as well to offer comments. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't have to renotice this, Karen. That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, um, all right, uh, Mister Kennedy, are you going to?
I I am. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, if I could ask, Claudia, we do have our engineer, Jim Kamalik, and um, a consultant from our acoustical team, Jack uh, Zubura, if you could elevate both of those folks in, um, if, uh, but as as Mister Bridger said, um, you know, we had a robust uh, discussion last time about sound in Princeton, and I know that's been a a a hot topic, uh, in other parts of, uh, other aspects of Princeton life, uh, since the meeting. But we did some homework, uh, been talking with uh, the neighbors as well, and uh, ultimately, um, we had a sound report done, uh, with a revised location that brings this device, um, closer away from the residential property line to perhaps a more appropriate location, uh, but um, one that uh, is now compliant, um, with uh, the applicable standard from DEP that was uh, being discussed. Uh, we had some field visits and testing, um, and uh, I'd like to uh, first bring up our, one of our sound consultants, uh, to to and I'll I'll show, um, what we had distributed and perhaps I'll ask that it be entered as an exhibit. Uh, last time we were A one, I believe this would be A two, uh, if it's okay for me to share my screen. Uh, so, uh, first, um, uh, we'll have, I guess, two witnesses. One was not here last time, so uh, Jack, if you could introduce yourself and perhaps uh, be asked that you be sworn in, and then I'll I'll ask you a few questions about who you are and what you've done here.
Sure.
All right, sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so Jack, uh, good to see you virtually here tonight. Um, uh, you're, uh, can you just very briefly tell the 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 board, uh, what you do, uh, where you work and and what you did for for this project here last month?
Sure, I'm a project manager at Lewis Goodfriend and Associates. Located in Cheston, New Jersey, and we focus on acoustical engineering and noise control. Um, I've been with them for twelve years. I have a bachelor's of engineering and acoustical engineering from the University of Hartford. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and I'm board certified by the Institute of Noise Control Engineering. And uh, I've been accepted by several boards in New Jersey and other states as an expert in acoustics.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Chairman, if it's if it's acceptable, I'd like to have him uh, recognized as an expert here tonight for
I I would agree. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Jack, you were, you were given some things to look at here, um, uh, with the, uh, if the board recalls, uh, there um, and and on the screen is a, uh, I'll describe is a, uh, page seven from the report that, uh, Jack's firm did. Um, showing a map, uh, I I thought it would be good to orient everyone, uh, but if you recall from last time, uh, this is an amended site plan for something the board had previously approved. This is a uh, conversion and kind of reuse or redevelopment of, uh, this property at three thirty-eight with residential and commercial use. Restoring and kind of saving, uh, at great expense to the applicant, the the front of the building, uh, and modifying the back. Uh, we had come back for site plan approval or amended site plan approval, uh, to locate, uh, two air conditioning units uh, of the more, uh, mundane, uh, residential type for the residential apartments, a, what we keep calling the chiller unit, which is a a a cooling, uh, piece of equipment, uh, for, uh, the rest of the building as well as generator. Um, those were uh, proposed initially, uh, to be located, uh, on the left side. If you're looking at the the picture here, where the dot is to the left of the building was a a a location where the chiller was to be located. This red box was where the generator was to be, um, uh, but we've since, uh, thought it'd be best to to move that chiller device over with the generator and, uh, further away from the residential properties that are shown on the left side of the screen. So Jack, um, could you just walk, um, the board through what testing, uh, your your firm did and and what the the standards are and what your conclusions were for the for the devices that are going to be installed?
Sure, so, uh, the NJDEP regulates a statewide noise ordinance, um, and those limits are basically sixty-five decibels during the daytime for residential and fifty decibels during the nighttime for residential. And if you're a commercial property line, it's sixty-five decibels for twenty-four hours a day. Um, what we did is we took the manufacturer's data for the generator and for the chiller, and we made a three-D acoustical model of the site and the equipment locations and the building heights. And the model essentially takes that input data and then calculates based on distance, based on shielding between uh, barriers and buildings and reflections off of those surfaces, uh, the effect of air absorption. And it calculates the resulting sound level at the adjacent property lines. In order to meet the code, uh, in addition to moving that chiller up to the northeast, we'd also have to install a ten-foot tall barrier basically on three sides of of the unit. We we allowed a door on the south side for access. But aside from that door on the south side, that, uh, that area is is basically totally enclosed by a ten-foot tall, uh, solid fence. And then after doing that, um, the modeling shows that we'd be compliant with the daytime and nighttime regulations at the residential property lines and the daytime regulations at the commercial lines. The only caveat is, is that for the generator testing, they can only test it during daytime hours. When the generator runs during an emergency at night, it's exempt from the noise regulations.
Uh, thanks, Jack. So just looking at this, um, here, uh, one and two are, I guess, testing locations, one being the commercial property line and two being the residential property line, is that?
That's correct, yeah. And one was kind of on the corner, so we have, we're kind of taking care of both of those commercial lines.
I'm just gonna switch to to the next page of your report, but this is the shown to be the revised location with the the generator and the chiller unit shown in that back corner, is that right?
That's correct, and that's how it appears in our model.
Um, and and finally, uh, your understanding is that the, the applicant is, uh, uh, I think we were agreeable this, uh, last month as well, but that the, uh, condition that the testing occur during the daytime, or I think even as we suggested last time, you know, during rush hour periods where they wouldn't be heard, um, over traffic, uh, those are things that are acceptable to the applicant, uh, is that, is that right?
Yeah, from a noise code standpoint, daytime Yeah, from a noise code standpoint, daytime is defined as 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. But certainly, if they were to do it during rush hour, that would have, you know, the least impact from a noise standpoint.
Got it. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further from this witness. If you'd like to have the board ask questions now, or I have a few quick things from our civil engineer just to go through the details of the change. I'll leave it to you. If you'd like me to get both of those and then people could ask both their questions together of both witnesses, or if you'd like to have our sound engineer available first, I'll owe you to you.
Oh, yeah. Why don't you, why don't you have the, have your civil engineer testify?
Thank you. And thanks, Jack. Jim, you can unmute and turn your camera on. I believe you're still sworn from last month and were accepted as an expert. Ms. Casey, if you'd be to swear again.
You're still under oath, Mr. Kamalik.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, Jim, I'm going to switch, hopefully without destroying my screen sharing capabilities. I may have found a glitch in the matrix when I'm about to do here. And indeed, I did. So, apologies. I thought it's faster to tab these things in my PDF viewer. It turns out when you do that, it stops the sharing. So, my apologies for the screen blip here. I guess I'd like to mark this as A3. This is a sketch that Mr. Kamalik did. Would you just describe it as a revised site sketch, so site plan? Is that fair?
Yeah, it's a revised site sketch. Basically, the plan that was previously submitted with a couple modifications to suit what was discussed in terms of relocating the equipment to the northeast corner of the property.
And this is a blow up, I guess, or a full-size version of what was provided to and included in the report that we were just looking at from.
Yes.
Okay. So, if you could quickly just take the board through. And I'm happy to point or zoom into things if needed. But, you know, where things used to be, where they'd be moving now, and what changed the plan that there are.
In terms of the generator in the northeast corner within this enclosure that we're highlighting here, that's the chiller on the left. That's been relocated to this, this location from the side yard, the previous location, as is being highlighted. And the setbacks were, with the chiller unit, were made better with this design in terms of 3.7 feet proposed for a side yard setback. And in this case, we have a side yard setback now of 5 feet and a rear yard setback of 4 feet. So, that condition is slightly improved in terms of the deviation. The generator as well, where previously it was 3 feet from the sideline and the rear line. Now, it's 5 feet from the side yard and 13 feet from the rear property line. So, that's been an improvement there. Relative to the two small condensers previously proposed in the side yard, they remain in that location. They're very small units. And there will be no substantial impact from those from a noise perspective. So, we're proposing to remain, let those remain in that location. I would highlight in the northeast corner where the enclosure area is proposed, that what we need to do in order to locate these two adjacent to one another and provide an adequate surround around the equipment is make some slight adjustments to the striping of the parking stalls along the rear property line, those seven parking stalls. And as you remember, we have six parking stalls that are opposite that adjacent to the building. And we did receive some variances previously for parking dimensions. And in this case, in order to make the site work the best way that it can, we're asking that we are able to reduce the width of the parking stalls along the rear property line to a minimum of 8 feet based upon the location of that enclosure within the northeast corner. We certainly believe that we'll be able to be in excess of 8 feet, but just based upon the final design and laying out those parking stalls. We really don't want to lose a parking stall. We want to maintain those seven at the rear. And we feel that we'll be able to have parking stall with, you know, in between 8 and 9 feet. But they, they will need the board to agree to some relief relative to that dimension. Additionally, in the side yard where the chiller was previously located, we relocated the trash cans and the recycling cans into the recessed area of the new addition. And that particular area is actually in the location of the previously existing trash can area that was on the site when Graves occupied the building. And in our case, the, the cans and the recycling cans will be located within the setback. No variance is required for that particular condition. Previously, that little enclosure area did encroach closer to the side yards. We're making that condition better. But we feel that, you know, based upon the demands of the building, that that'll be sufficient to provide a relocated trash area so that that northeast corner can be dedicated solely to the equipment.
And Jim, I think we talked about it last month. But just remind the board, you know, as part of the project, there is plans to kind of upgrade that fencing area between the properties. That remains the same.
Yes, there would be a solid 6-foot-high wood fence that's proposed between the two properties. And that, that still remains the same as part of the project. Yes.
Along, along the entire property line?
It will wind up tying in, if you could highlight to the right of the 10-foot dimension, Ryan, to the existing building. Right, right there. It will tie into the building there, Mr. Chairman, and then proceed to the north along the property line to the left at 6 feet, all the way to the back. There's existing 6-foot-high fence and buffering adjacent to the parking lot already. And we'll be extending that in the area between the new addition and the property line. So, that whole line will have a 6-foot-high fence.
How are you going to back out of those last two spaces?
Well, we are providing 20 feet. And as part of the prior approval, we did provide a minimal bump out there to the extent that we could, you know, relative to that turnout for those two spaces. But this particular design plan includes the previous limits of the parking lot that was previously approved. So, we haven't reduced any turnout area in that vicinity. We've maintained that relative to the prior plan. But, you know, we're sort of working within the confines of, you know, this small lot here and the horizontal constraints, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, last thing, and again, I apologize for everyone's screen blipping again. But Mr. Kamalik was kind enough to kind of just summarize the revised, you know, variances that result from moving the chiller to this location. And I'll just kind of blow that up and let him just kind of review those for the board.
Right. So, from a housekeeping, you know, standpoint, our final list here, the AC chiller unit, side yard and rear yard, 5 feet and 4 feet respectively. The generator side yard and rear yard, 5 feet and 13 feet respectively. The condensers are remaining as proposed, 8.8 feet, where 10-foot is the ordinance standard. As mentioned by Mr. Bridger, because the acoustical screen is in excess of 6 feet, that perimeter fence around the equipment, we're seeking relief for that as well. And that enclosure would be located on the property line at at least two sides. So, we're just noting that from a horizontal standpoint. And we previously mentioned the adjusted parking lot stall width along the rear line for those seven stalls.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, could you send a copy of that to my office in Karen's, please? Yes. Variance, I didn't see that in the submission. Thanks.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, so that's all we have essentially to summarize the changes. We're hopeful that, you know, a lot of the discussions with the neighbors were really about moving it further away from the residential property line. While it does comply with the noise requirements, hopefully that it's further away is also helpful. You know, there's the technical requirement and there's the, you know, the physical distance certainly helps as well. I know they likely have, still have some comments. We've had a nice dialogue with them over the past month. But, you know, recognize that this was kind of a collaborative effort, both from the board and kind of thinking through what the requirements should be in last month. And then us kind of working with the sound folks to find a better place for this device that is further away from and quieter essentially for the residential folks in the neighborhood in a place that's compliant. So.
Has there been any comment from the, I guess it would be the office building people because of the relocation of the generator and the chiller into that one area?
Not, not that I've been party to directly, no.
Okay. All right. Board members, any questions, comments of the applicant? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public at this point. Claudia, do we have anyone who's indicated they'd like to speak?
Mr. Bill, no, Lor, Mr. Lor.
Okay.
Mr. Lord, I think you had testified at the last hearing, so you remain under oath, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two, two questions. The first question was on the generator. Unless I misunderstood, it is exempt from the requirements of the 50 decibel limit overnight.
It, this is Jack, the noise consultant. It's exempt when it runs during an emergency. So, if the power fails and, you know, there's, then it's exempt. But they can't test it at night. So, when normal testing, they would have to be doing that during the daytime to be compliant.
Okay, yeah, I missed the emergency.
Yeah, that's, that's the key point.
True. And my second question was on the fence that's proposed on the west side to hide the garbage cans. It's a 10, a 6-foot-high fence?
Yes, that's correct.
What's it made of?
It would be a board-on-board solid wood fence. That's what we're proposing. No.
Okay.
It would be solid in order to provide screening for you.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Bill Potter is there. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Am I being heard?
We hear you, but we can't see you. At least I can see you. There's also Julia, Julia Mass. All right, but that, that's your client, correct, Mr. Potter? All right. So, if you, if you have questions from his mastake, then, you know, she can speak under your questioning, but.
Julia can testify on her own. I'll just ask her, what is your testimony?
Okay.
I'm sorry, discovered to me, yes. So, it's been a pleasure to be in conversation with the applicants and to try to find a solution. There was a comment that was made by Professor Dale Mead in the last meeting and then which he followed up with a memo, I believe, to the board about the importance of this testing being done, not theoretically, but in use and in place. And I'm wondering about the, the status of that. First, that's the first question.
Well, in other words, you're asking whether the testing will occur at an operational level with, under real-life circumstances. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Because so far, I only heard about theoretical tests and model tests, which is quite different, as we had a discussion last time. And as was followed up in that memo that went to us and to the board, it's different than actual conditions.
Thank you. Which witness will answer that question?
Before, before we do that, I'm not sure if I follow what memo is being referred to here.
Mr. Mead did send me the memo. And I sent him back an email that said in accordance with municipal land use law, he would need to be at this hearing to read that into the record. But I think you hit on the most cogent point of the memo, so.
Oh, I'd be happy to read it into the record.
But you didn't prepare it, Mr. Mastick, so.
I see. I understand.
I think we, apologies, just want to make sure we knew. But I'll direct that to, to, to Jack, I suppose. I guess the question is, you know, how, how testing would work?
Well, certainly, you could have a condition of approval that they complete post-installation sound testing. But obviously, they would need approval to get that equipment installed and operational in order to do that. Once testing, you know, once the equipment was installed, the DEP has a procedure as to how you go out and test equipment like this. Ideally, we would test it on and off. You could subtract the two levels to find out what the contribution is. And the contribution is what is held to that standard of 65 or 50.
Well, what happens if the equipment in operation exceeds the permissible levels of 65 decibels in the daytime and 50 decibels at night?
They would, then they would be compelled to implement additional noise control measures.
And are those noise control measures available? What are they?
It could be better silencing. It could be better enclosures. They can use a different style of fan on the, on the chiller. They're certainly available. But the data we have from the manufacturer shows that the proposed equipment is expected to be compliant. But certainly, we could do post-installation testing to test that.
Okay. My understanding is that that particular chiller has a decibel reading that can go as high as 85, which is what, that's an algorithmic increase. I mean, it's an increase of what percent over 65 decibels?
I'm not exactly sure where you're getting that reading from. I'm not familiar with that. The data that I have shows that it is 67 decibels at 10 feet.
67 decibels is the maximum?
That's what it is at 10 feet. That's what the manufacturer's data shows.
We have different data that was in record from our expert in the last one's hearing.
I'm not privy to that data. If you want to bring it on the screen, I'll take a look and see if it's familiar.
I'm not sure I can.
Mr. Potter, are you saying that you got an expert? I thought that your position was you weren't going to get your own expert. Is that correct?
No, Dennis Hudasko was the expert planner.
Oh, your planner. Oh, okay. Is Mr. Hudasko here or?
No, he is not. He, he was simply reading from the internet.
Karen, I can't see Mr. Potter. Aren't we supposed to be able to see?
Yeah, that's true. He's not testifying, but it would be helpful to see Mr. Potter. Yeah, Bill, do you think you can activate your, your video?
Do I activate it up on the top?
It should be. They are.
Oh, hi, Bill.
There you are.
Hi, Karen. Let me sort of cut this short. We've been negotiating back and forth and exchanging numerous emails and text messages with Ryan and, and Julia and so forth. And I think that we are prepared to basically not oppose this application, provided it is made, the variance approvals are made subject to compliance with the DEP regulations at NJAC 729-1 at SEC. And in particular, with respect to the testing, it states that measurements shall be made, shall be taken at or within the property line of any affected person. And I would deem that my client is an affected person. And so, we would like to have the testing done at that property line. And so we would like to have the testing done at that property line and also at the second floor or is it third floor, second floor offices? So that there is a real life test of the impacts on the nearby residents. We would also like to see some trees or other natural landscaping be placed at or around the location of the chiller generator as shown on page seven of the testimony of the report.
Why is that?
They also don't want to see it.
But there's a wall around it.
No.
Julia?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak here. I have also pictures that I can show, and I have that decibel level, by the way, from the manufacturer's statement that Dennis Hudasko reported last hearing. This new location, which is to the northeast corner, is on the direct site line and sound line of my home office and my husband's home office, which has implications both for what the site is like of a ten foot enclosure and also for the way in which the sound is moving, as opposed to another possible solution, which would have put it in the southeast corner, where there would have been a blockage from the new building that was built in the back of the old building.
Over the trees, we were the comment was in relation, the question was in relationship to the trees in front of the wall.
Mister Chairman, I understood that the comments were about trees being placed around the enclosure, the ten foot enclosure for the generator, the proposal occasion for the generator and chiller, not which are directly visible from, because we have a two story building here, both of us, that are the buildings that Mister Lord and myself and my husband and his wife and Princeton University own. And on our second floor, since we're writers, we have different sound impacts and visual impacts that are on the ground floor.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I would suggest that the board proceed to approve this application, but subject to the compliance with the DP regulations and subject to the test testing taking place during actual field operations and subject to any necessary landscaping around the generator chiller site. And I think it could be delegated to the engineer, Mister Derek Bridger, to work with the Mister King and work with my client and work with Mister Lord as well. And just make sure that this all takes place according to the plans of the applicant and according to the DP regulations. I think we can sort of cut through a lot of this.
Well, we can, but but I don't want to leave the 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 landscaping issue up to interpretation. And the and I'm not familiar, quite frankly, with the DP regulations, so I don't know specifically what that requires.
Well, it's quite comprehensive. I don't I don't think you want to go through them tonight, all the regulations.
I'll agree with you there. Let me just say, you know, th- this board can't grant grant a variance from a state requirement. I I think the testimony was that this will comply. Happy to bring bring the the site plan back up. Unfortunately, there's there's no other place to put more. You know, I think as some of the board members noticed, there there's it it's screened by a fence and there's there are trees along the lot line. There unfortunately is just not more room on the far side of the lot without removing parking to to create additional screening.
That's where I was getting to.
From from the from 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 anyone. Unfortunately, there's just it doesn't seem to be room for that. We're already to 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 fit this in that corner, we're already needing to kind of squeeze the parking spaces in a bit and and, you know, unfortunately, there's just not more space there.
Yeah, Ryan, there is a visual impact as well as a noise impact, which would, we would like to minimize that if at all possible, maybe certain maybe there's room to plant arbivide, which are very narrow, thin trees that grow to a great height.
Jim, is there room for that?
A minute, we're talking about a parking lot. It's going to be a parking lot. After trees are grown, she's still going to be looking in a cars pulling in and out of a parking lot. There's no way around that. And she's looking at a fence that's about two hundred yards away from her house. I mean, I don't see why you'd have to plant trees around it.
Fair, I'm present.
To put up, you're already willing to put up the fence for ten feet.
Julia, do you want to respond to that?
I just wanted to say that I'm present here if you want to speak to to me rather than she. Yeah, I'm aware about having a parking light and now getting more cars squeezed in right next to our garden and our house and it's something that's thrilling to me, but unfortunately, we didn't have opportunity to comment on the original plan. And the fact that there's a parking lot of cars that are approximately, I don't know the exact height of the cars that are going to be parked there, but the ten foot with also the sound that interestingly enough, I don't know why the door opening is on the side that's facing Mister Lord's house as opposed to facing in my house rather than facing Harrison Street. Sorry, that's off topic from the shrubbery, but I just remembered it, the access door.
One further point on the DP regulations, Mister Dale Mead, Professor Mead brought them up at the last session. And I since had a occasion to review them, it it's quite common, frankly, to approve an application subject to compliance with DP regulations, as Mister Kennedy points out. In fact, you pretty much are duty bound to do so, legally bound to do so.
Sure, what is that directed to me? I I don't I don't I'm not sure what's happening now.
I think we're all thinking.
I finished thinking a while ago.
You finished thinking already? No, it's much too early.
Want to bring the site plan up again so we can just look at that one more time?
Certainly. And I'm happy to zoom in or out on any part if that's helpful, Mister Chairman.
Doesn't really look like there's any room for planting against that wall.
No.
Can there be planting inside the can the containment area? It might be helpful to know that there are nine to ten foot evergreen solid row of trees on the neighbor's side of her solid wood fence. So we have a solid six foot wood fence with a very dense row of evergreen trees at an approximate height of nine to ten feet, which is shown here on this exhibit in text. But that's the reality.
Happy to testify as to the reality of the views and to put up screen images, if you would like, from my from our offices. I'm pretty aware of the reality of it. Thank you.
And Mister Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
You can take the site plan down.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Mister Kennedy, do you want to comment further on that?
I I think that the board, you know, understands what, you know, we'd like to we're we're doing our best here and unfortunately, just not a lot of room for other other things here. This is this far away from the neighboring properties that we really could could move it. You know, it's a compliant location now.
Okay. Any other members of the public like to speak? Or the part people who have spoken before, do you want to add anything to what you said?
Well, Mister Chairman, I detect a certain negative tone here, but from the board, which I would.
I don't agree with that.
Oh, okay. Then I'm misdetecting. That's quite possible. I've done it before. We are hopeful that compliance with the DP regulations as to where the sound testing would take place. And that that would be that all approvals are subject to those regulations.
Mister Kennedy, Mister Kennedy said they were.
Okay, and that includes doing so after the equipment is in place and the the field testing is as realistic as possible from the actual chillers and so forth. And that they will take all necessary actions to bring the equipment within compliance. Perhaps I'm I'm gilding a lowly or something.
We we have to, we have to comply with the NG with the with the DP requirements that that involves testing at the property line or the interior, whichever is closer or louder, I guess, but that's the that's what the the requirement is. I I would prefer that we not try to scribe it into a a condition and 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 get it wrong, you know, that we this board or the municipality can't change what the state's requirements are. Even had we not have to come to this board, we would have to comply with those rules regardless of approval. So we certainly understand that and we'll we'll do that.
Well, I would I would like actually to be included within the terms of the approval, that it's conditioned upon compliance with the DP regulations. It happens all the time, zoning boards and planning boards.
Well, Mister Kennedy said that they would comply because they had no choice but to comply.
And let's put it in right.
My concern is is only in the a a attempt to summarize or 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 recite parts of the the code, not that that it's applicability.
I guess you could just cite the code itself.
Yeah, I would concur with that.
Thank you.
I would concur with that. Thank you.
May I? George, yes.
Yeah, so if they go through with this, and nevertheless, the neighbors feel it's too loud, presumably you might be able to call up the state environmental people and have them come out and, you know, issue some sort of summons. I mean, there's a procedure for violation, is there not?
Yes, there is, and there are pretty heavy fines. And the affected person, as described in the regulations, could actually file for enforcement by the local board of health.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's a mechanism in place for enforcement already.
Mister Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
The question is this, so then, as in the statement that was from Professor Me that I I understand that not everyone saw that, and so it may not be official evidence, if that's correct, excuse me if I don't have the language correct, that this compliance is going to be tested once it's in place, the equipment is in place.
I believe whatever whatever the requirement in.
Certificate, the, yeah, COA.
Whatever the requirement is in the standards, that will be followed.
All right. Thank you. I think we've imposed enough on the board.
Okay. All right. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Claudia, do we have anyone else?
No more hands, no hands.
Okay, all right. Hearing none, we'll close the public portion. Mister Ryan, do you want to summarize before we go into executive session?
Very briefly, again, just thanking the board for, we had a, again, a spirited discussion last time. This is the, you know, a a better location, a better site plan, and appreciative of everyone's, you know, input in involvement to to get to this point. So thank you for that. There are some new revised technical variances resulting from this process. And, you know, I I hope or trust that our engineers' testimony, you know, for the bulk standards last time, what was sufficient to give you to that this is even even more better plan, especially with the reduced, not just sound, but the reduced distances from the lot lines, even in the new location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, we'll go into executive session. Do does anyone have any comments on this application and questions, comments? Or does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second it.
I I think I'd like to add that I think that the I think the applicant has made a a good faith effort to address the concerns of the neighbors and the neighbors have given us all their concerns. And I think based on what I've heard tonight, I think it's a very workable situation. I think the acoustical screening is adequate, I guess. The visual screening, given the distances from the homes, I think is as best as we can get, given what's been previously approved and what's going on on this lot. And I think it's a good, I think it's a good solution. Okay. Any other board member comments? Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Wilson? Yes. Ravich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kai?
Yes.
Chairman Cole?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you both. The applicant and and the neighbors, thanks for coming out and sharing everyone's concerns, and I think we have a good solution. Good, okay. Moving right along, our next our next application is thirty five to thirty seven South Harrison Street, block fifty two oh one, lot one oh two in the R three zone.
Mister Chairman, that's our application. Brooke Brown was, I love, there she is, thirty five thirty seven South Harrison. Claudia, Chaz Wampold and Martha Reinhardt, did you see either of them in the audience? Because I'd like to elevate them. They're going to talk during our case.
Give me the names again, please.
Wampold, Chaz, Wampold and Martha Reinhardt. Our neighbors.
Before the application begins, I'll just note for the record that noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Thank you. Yes, Brooke Brown is the owner, applicant of thirty five thirty seven South Harrison Street and seeking C one and C two variance relief to permit the construction of addition of a second residential unit, creating a two family dwelling subjects located in the R three zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations of seventeen A two forty two, two forty six and four oh three of the Princeton land use code. It's also in the Jugtown Historic District, and it has been reviewed by the Princeton Historic Commission. I see Julie is here tonight. She'll touch on that after I finish this memo. The property was a subject of an appeal in April two thousand twenty one, brought by a neighbor to the zoning board of adjustment. This had to do with the proximity of the addition of the second unit at that time to the second more tree on their property. Missed it Brown, in advance of that meeting, had moved the redesigned her layout, moving the house out of the drip line of the the tree. The ZBA remanded the case back to the HPC. They had not reviewed the plan, and the current plan has been reviewed further and revised further and has variances that were not in the previous plan that require approval by the zoning board. The applicant is proposing to construct the second residential unit, which will join the existing single family home on the lot, creating a two family dwelling. The existing house contains a living room, kitchen, family room, office, two bedrooms and three full baths. Parking for the existing unit is provided for in the existing detached one car garage and driveway, and the new unit will contain a kitchen, living room, dining room, four bedrooms, four baths, and parking will be accommodated within the proposed attached garage. The new additional unit will require the following variances. Rear yard setback, the requirement's thirty-five, and the proposal is twenty-one point one feet. It requires a garage setback for the new unit. Um typically, front-facing garages are. Required to be set back sixteen feet, and this is flush with the front of the house, and so it's a zero setback. And then finally, um the new unit has its own driveway, whereas only one driveway is permitted on a lot, so it has. It has two two driveways. Um. The project will require store management approval. Um. If uh if if it's approved, they've requested consideration on the C one and C two, and that's a brief synopsis of my memo. I also, as I mentioned earlier, Julie Capizoli, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, is here. And uh if you don't have any questions of me, I think she may want to uh address the H P C's review of this application, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, um Julie, do you want to give us a summary of your findings?
Um Julie, before you begin, we'll just swear you in. Uh do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Not sure if I see Julie. I thought she was here.
Yes, she was.
There she is.
Back, she's back.
She's muted. Julie, you're muted?
Sorry, I have been here, and then I love, I was. Uh ejected, and then I'm back.
Julie, we just need to swear in, to swear, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So you might recall that we had um. Approved the applicant's um. First application, then it was challenged by the neighbors, they came to you. Uh then the applicant came back to the H P C after. Very graciously working with the neighbors and working out a compromise that worked for both of them. That compromise involved variances, so I'm here to support those variances and also to um. Commend them for their working together, for cooperation, and for all good things that involve. Compromise and and resolution.
Thank you. Okay, is is that it?
Yep.
Okay, good, good, alright, um. Who will be presenting this for the applicant?
Uh Chris here, I'm gonna do that. Um I see uh Chaz and Martha have been elevated and are here, as has uh Brooke. I wonder to save time, could we have all three of them sworn right now before I put the slides up?
Sure. Uh let's see, Ms. Brooke and.
Brooke Brown, Ms. Brown.
Brooke Brown, sorry, and the neighbors are again, we state your names, please.
They're on you.
Um Charles Wampold.
And Martha. Alright, uh do you also affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
We did.
Thank you.
Uh we've got the thirteen slides that we're gonna quickly go through to remind you what you just summarized what you saw before. So we'll go to the next slide. To orient you, uh obviously, this is on South Harrison, uh just down from Nassau Street. Uh and you see the existing house that uh they're being pointed to. And on the next slide, we blow this up just to touch, because you'll see that. Uh the empty lot is the one that's between forty and forty-one, and the green area is the municipal park. And you're gonna see some photos of that later, has to do with the rear yard setback. Um it's surrounded on two sides by the park, and on the other side by the Wampold Reinhardt family. Next slide. So again, uh the H P C approved this conforming uh application uh some time ago. Uh and uh then uh Chaz and Martha. Uh had a report done up by Mister Wells, pointing out that this new ordinance. Says that you should stay out of the drip line of trees, particularly large and stately trees. So this is what you saw the last time in April. He said we'd move it back uh to to twenty-five feet, which is what. Um Mister Wells thought would be acceptable. Uh but you said, why don't you go back and talk to your neighbors one more time? And then go to the H P C and get it approved. So the next slide shows you uh the final result. Um this new ordinance that Princeton has, that says you have to stay out of the drip line of the tree, is quite extraordinary. And there's a big tree, so this green circle shows you the drip line of that sycamore tree, as it comes on to Ms. Brown's property. But uh they sat down and they uh looked at the alternative designs together. And came up with the design that you're looking at. It absolutely preserves the large sycamore tree. And complies completely with that new shade tree ordinance. Um and it reduces the visual impact of the house by pushing it well back from where it was. Uh but uh as Julie's pointed out, and and has Derek has pointed out, there's three variances, the rear yard setback. Uh two driveways where only one is permitted, and the garage not being slid back sixteen feet. Uh so let's go to the next slide. Um a- as Julie also pointed out, the H P C unanimously recommended the variances that you're going to see. Next. Uh they did ask for uh the applicant to consider looking at some changes to the plan. I'm just gonna quickly summarize those. They suggested a front porch might look really nice. Uh what Brooke pointed out was that 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 porch would encroach into the drip line of that tree. On the one side, and on the other side, the driveway is very tight. Uh they suggested she lower the ceilings. Uh she already did lower the ceilings, and. Um the house is only three feet higher than the existing home. And when it's set back, that difference won't be visible. It's also nine feet lower than the absolute height requirement or permitted height for the zone. Uh they suggested she change the front door, it was already approved. This led her to thinking, and she said that she'd be happy to uh, she's gonna go look in a salvage yard to see if. There's an old door that uh H P C might approve, but uh failing that, she'll keep the door she's got. Likewise, the windows are, would stay the same, upper are smaller than the lower, and they were previously approved. Um she had gravel tire tracks going to the new garage, and they suggested concrete. She agreed to do that. Um they suggested removing the blue stepping stones, but that would violate the neighborhood character ordinance. You have to have a walkway. You can't walk down the driveway anymore. And then finally, uh they uh suggested that she remove the sort of rickety fence over by the Wampold Reinhardt. Property and leave the hedge, and she agreed to do that. So those are the seven things that H P C asked you to take up. And that's their, her quick response. Next slide. So three variances. Variance number one is the, from the neighborhood character. Ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago, the little green drawing down in the right-hand corner. Says that the garage should be set back sixteen feet from the facade of the home. Uh by pushing the entire home back uh forty-three feet from the property line. Um the 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 house can't be arranged in such a way as to slide the garage back an additional sixteen feet. But the, obviously, the visual impact is is minimized substantially by moving the house to the rear. Uh next slide. The second variance is that there are two driveways. Uh the Wampold's plan suggested that instead of having a two-car garage for the blue house. Uh it have only a one-car garage and the small tire tracks, and that you leave in place. The driveway to the right, which has been there forever, and that that driveway would serve the red house. And the next slide shows the last variance. Which is the rear yard setback. In order to push the house back and still have a livable area, the red area with the arrow. Uh encroaches into the rear uh lot line, uh the rear yard. Um but I want to show you an aerial as the next slide. Uh you can see that the park has massive evergreens. Uh certainly on the one side, that where that black dot is, is where the new home would be. And you can see that to the rear, there are uh evergreens. What's not visible here is that right on the fence line. Of all of these properties, there are substantial hedges and hedgerows, uh so that uh moving the house to the rear would not be material. And I think that takes us to the, thank you, and uh I took from Julie's memo, her. Written compliment that she reiterated verbally to you. So I I I uh share her view that uh this could have been contentious. Uh but by uh Brooke sitting down with Chaz and Martha and coming up with a plan that they could both, they could all agree to. Uh it does have some variances, but uh they're all justified by the. Compliance with this new ordinance, saving of the roots of the sycamore tree. Uh and uh the fact that uh there's no impact on the park, all mitigate in favor of granting those three variances. Mister Chairman.
Mister Tarr, you want this to be Exhibit A one?
Okay, um. Who will speak next? Will anyone?
I think if if well, Chaz and Martha have been sworn, and uh we've spent a lot of time talking with them about it, I wonder if if you'd let them. That's all we've got. Only. Chaz, where'd you go?
Here I, we're here. Okay, thank you, uh uh Chris. Um and I I I just want to say that that what Chris reported is absolutely correct. We had very productive meetings with Brooke, and we feel that the. Uh plan that we've all come up with is really has wonderful advantages, both from. You know, saving the tree, but also from historic preservation perspective, moving the the new construction back. I think just works really well with the neighborhood and keeps the historic properties. Front forward and separate from the new construction, and it just, all in all, I think um. You know, I'm just very pleased. Uh these, both of our properties, you know, twenty-some-odd years ago, were very distressed. Properties, and I'm, you know, here we are, whatever, twenty-five years down the road. And I really feel like we've got some, now with Brooke's, you know, redo of the existing property. Things are looking beautiful um in this little corner of the world, and I think that her plan. Will um make it, keep it beautiful, and um. We really hope that the board will agree to her, the variances. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. It's good to hear that uh everybody seems satisfied so far. Okay, um. Mister Tarr, is there anyone else that wants to speak right now? You want to speak?
I think we're good. Brooke asked me to summarize, I think I did, so I think we're good.
Okay, um we'll open this up to the public at this point. Claudia, is there anybody who's indicated they'd like to speak?
Um hold on one second, I got a hand here.
I I just promoted Donald Cox, he had raised his hand.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Mister Cox, we just need your address, and we need to swear you in.
Uh my uh my name is Donald Cox. I I live at forty Harrison Street. With an official mailing address of forty South Harrison Street.
Alright, and we're just going to ask you, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I would like to uh just point out a a uh an objection to the noticing requirements. Uh first off, um I think even on some of the drawings that were shown. Um Harrison Street has several different names. The portion of Harrison Street that extends principally between Prospect Street and Nassau Street. Is Harrison Street with no north or south designation. The noticing requirements that were made to the public on this particular property. Identified it as thirty-five thirty-seven South Harrison Street. There is no property on South Harrison Street with those numbers. Secondly, secondly, I would also like to point out that I never received. Uh a notice um at my address for this meeting. And I don't know whether the uh um. The board has um notarized copies of the uh return uh receipts. But I would like to know if there was one returned for forty Harrison Street, and what is the name that was on it?
Oh, you happen to have that?
Well, the applicant is not obligated to provide what we call green cards, the return receipt, they are obligated to provide the white. Uh mailing slip that you get stamped from the post office when you send something via certified mail. So I think the applicant complied with the list of addresses as provided to them by the town.
So I. And that's the key. You ask Mister Bridger for a list, he goes to the tax officials that give you a list, you send to the people on the list. The the state statute says that's what you have to do. If the list is wrong, because the town got it wrong. And then it's, I apologize to Mister Cox, but that's the way the law reads.
Well, I I would like to point out to Mister Tarr that for purposes of the noticing requirements, you use the mailing address for the property. And not the legal.
Sir, we use the address given to us by the town. That's what we did.
I I beg to disagree, because I I've had several instances where I've applied for permits. And they've always told me that if I put the south designation on, it was wrong, because. Harrison between Prospect and Nassau is simply Harrison.
Let me, let me make my, let me make my, make myself more clear, Mister Cox. The the town gives you the lot, the block, the owner's name, and the street address as the town uses it. And an applicant must, unless he chooses to be contrary. Put exactly what the town has given the applicant on the envelope. And if they do that, then it was good notice. If they decide to do it some other way, because you like it that way, then the notice is bad notice. So again, I apologize to you if you didn't get noticed because you weren't on the list. But I'm trying to explain the way the town and the state law makes us do the notice.
Okay, so did you address the letter to my house at forty South Harrison Street?
Mister Bridger, why don't you go ahead? I don't have the list here.
I I have it as well, but.
It was addressed to forty Harrison Street, which was the address on the uh the tax book.
Okay, what is the address on the tax book for the, for thirty-five thirty-seven?
I don't know. I mean, we took the address that the applicant gave us. I mean.
Alright, well, here here's the issue that I have, is I I happen to be in that one section of Harrison. That has no north or south designation, and I have the only property that has a corresponding number on the north side. So anytime the mail is sent to my address, and it doesn't include the term south. There's a fifty-fifty chance it'll get delivered to the other property on the north side.
Well, this is the good neighbor application, so if Miss, if you would like uh Ms. Brown to support. Your goal of having your house designated as forty South Harrison, I bet she'll do it.
Well, I I I would like to, for, if there are future notifications that the the address of forty south. Be used for mailing purposes and notice purposes.
If Mister Bridger can arrange it, we'll do it.
I mean, you'd have to discuss it with the tax assessor and collector, they they maintain the list. I I. I would suggest you call either one of those gentlemen.
So so you're telling me that this property is is listed as thirty-five thirty-seven South Harrison? And I live directly across the street, and my house is forty Harrison.
I don't make the list, the list is what it is. We take the names off the list, and we mail them in accordance with the state guidelines.
Yeah, but how how did this house get noted noticed as as thirty-five thirty-seven South Harrison?
I don't think we.
This house is the applicant, it doesn't need to be noticed.
Uh okay, but do you pull those, when you give, it says, he said that the town gave him the address. Did you give him the address as thirty-five thirty-seven South Harrison?
Mister Chairman, help me, please. I just, we're gonna go all night with this. We we've answered the question.
I. I did not get the list off, we got the list from the applicant's address from the applicant. We checked the list on the, within two hundred feet from the tax list.
You're reflecting to the fact that yours isn't South Harrison. If hers is South Harrison, then then you should be like her. I I don't get. You're reflecting to the fact that yours isn't South Harrison. If hers is South Harrison, then, then you should be like her. I, I don't get the problem here. I'm trying to be a good neighbor.
Well, Mr. Tarr, so am I. I'm trying to be a good neighbor too. There's, there's a mailing address and there's a legal address. And the, on my deed, I've got both. I've got the legal address and the mailing address.
Okay.
But anyway.
35 South Harrison.
That, that, that's a, that's a minor point. The only thing, or a concern that I had was with respect to the second driveway. I would like to, if possible, I know there was a lot of discussion on 269 South Harrison Street about all the dangers of traffic, the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic that was discussed at 269 Harrison Street, 269 South Harrison Street, excuse me. That all exists here, and this is a part of Harrison Street that is even narrower than the part of Harrison Street at 269. I have concerns about, one, a second driveway being put in, but also the requirement from the Historic Preservation Commission that the hedge be maintained in front of the house. That gives very little range of visibility for that second driveway. And the reason why I have this concern is those are the two properties that are right near the entrance to Harrison Street Park. And we have a lot of young kids that walk from homes in the neighborhood to the Harrison Street Park, to go up that sidewalk along those properties. And if there isn't an adequate field of view for that driveway, I'm concerned about, you know, the, the situation for the kids crossing there.
Thanks. I've talked to Brooke about backing out onto Harrison. I think if she could just tell you her experience with the house that she's owned for quite a long time. Brooke, can you unmute yourself and tell us about backing onto South Harrison?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do I need to be sworn in?
You already have it.
Okay, okay. So I used to have a house on Hamilton Avenue and there were cars parked on the street. And on three occasions, I was hit getting in and out of the driveway. What I found on Harrison is because there are no houses between my house and Nassau Street, there's one on the corner of Nassau and Harrison, it's actually been pretty easy to back out of the driveway. I think that your concern about the hedge is valid. And I think a solution to that would be that if I put a hedge in, I could take out the old hedge and put a new hedge in and put it closer to the new house so that the hedge is not at the driveway. Maybe that would be the solution. There is a hedge, an old hedge in front of the existing historical house. It, it has to be cut down, but I think that, you know, I'm more than happy to move it up closer to the house and further from the street.
Understood. That, that might help with the situation. I had a couple of questions about the, the hedge requirement because there's, there are two heights to the hedge property. There's, there's one that meets the, the height of the fence, which is maybe what, five to six feet high? And then there's another portion of the hedge, which is maybe three feet high. Were, were there any recommendations for the height of the hedge that would be there?
I think as a property owner, you can trim your hedge and I believe that I like it lower because I feel that just as people are walking by, they're biking by and the hedges can get pretty overgrown. But the larger hedge that is there, I think was kind of going with the fence that was there, so that fence would come down. That was part of what was discussed. It's very old and it would have needed to be rebuilt anyway, so that would come down.
Okay. I do want to point out though, that for the field of view for the, for the driveway currently there on 35 Harrison Street, that, that the hedge does not front the full front edge of the property. It actually stops before the steps going up, which leaves maybe an extra 10-foot field of view to look further down the street. And it's unclear to me from the proposal that's been made with the requirement by the Historic Preservation Commission that there be a hedge, how much of a gap there's going to be on either side of the driveway for that field of view.
So just to make it clear, it was a recommendation from HPC, which was frankly agreed to at the HPC meeting, that the fence would be removed, that there would be a hedge of some sort in front of the new home. Your suggestions are very, very good to be careful about sightlines. But I remind the board that what the HPC approved previously was a two-car garage for the new house. So there were two cars backing down there. Now, by leaving the existing garage driveway, it goes all the way to the rear of the home. There's a space to make the K-turn and can come out to the street in a forward direction. So the existing house is fine, we're just talking about the new house and there are half the driveways there that they're used to be.
Right, okay. I, I just wanted to point out that for, for my driveway, and I, I know for, for my neighbor that's at 36 Harrison Street, that we both back into our driveways and my wife, after being hit twice, getting into her driveway at 40 Harrison Street, we were told by our insurance company that we should consider backing in because it would be safer when aggressing the driveway.
Right. So if that, if that's a, a good turning movement, then I saw, I'm sure the new owners will, will take that into account. But Brooke has told me that she can get in and out either way from the existing drive.
Right, but that existing drive has, has a much wider field of view than what appeared to be proposed for, for the second.
If the hedges, if the hedges were too high, as you pointed out, that was a good point.
Or not sufficient, giving sufficient width for the driveway.
Right, right, right.
Excuse me.
Hi, Martha.
Hi, I have had the issue that Don is describing. And without getting permission, and I did get it after the fact, I just put up a convex mirror on the post right by my driveway. It works like a charm. I just can see now up and down Harrison Street and as to the hedge, it was one continuous hedge. Ours has gotten lower because frankly, it was unhealthy. And Brooke, yours would be healthier if you whacked it off. It comes back really well. And it's lower and it's safer and it's over. I think it would be a shame to move it and maybe unnecessary, but I definitely think that there are plenty of accommodations. And I, since my mirroring, really since that one incident, have never had a problem on my side. And Don, the issue with the number of the street is I gave it and used South Harrison Street because every package that comes to my house says South Harrison Street. But I actually love being that stretch of Harrison Street. It was just Harrison Street, but that is gone with the postal service adding the four digits to the zip code. So sayonara. Anyway.
Right, I, I understand. I, I just know that I don't get mail if it's addressed to my legal address rather than my mailing address.
Okay, I just don't want to leave without your address. If you want to contact me, I'm going to be out of the office the next two days, but I'd be happy to try to put you in touch with whoever we can to get your address situation straightened out, so you'll get proper notice in the future, so.
Well, I, actually, I've, I've been yelled at multiple times for using South Harrison Street by various different departments within the town, telling me that they designate the street names and that my address is 40 Harrison Street.
Well, I'd be glad to.
And they tell me, it's, they tell me, it's my responsibility to correct it with the post office.
Mr. Cox, I sympathize with your situation. I think Mr. Bridger will help you where he can and, and it should be resolvable. I just.
Well, I would just ask, I would kindly ask for Mr. Tarr that in the, in the future, if, if he notices me and, and he has to be compliant with the noticing requirements of the town, that perhaps he sends out two certified letters, one to my mailing address and one to my legal address.
The Brooke Brown Good Neighbor Policy will continue.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other, any other public comment? Okay, Claudia, no one else out there?
No more hands.
Great. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and Mr. Tarr, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, board members, questions, comments, or a motion? Seems to me that we have kind of a solution that, that everybody's happy with. So I welcome your comments. Any comments?
Move, we accept the application as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
There, I'll second it.
Excellent. Any, any comments on the motion? Okay, Claudia?
Olson?
Yes.
Herr David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving right along. Hopefully, we go to our last application of the evening. Oh, excuse me, not, not our last. I spoke too soon. Okay, let's see. We are now going to 211 Winant. Winant, how do you pronounce that?
Winant.
Winant, okay. 211 Winant Drive, 21 Brearley Road, Block 8401, lots 28 and 29 in the R2 District. Karen, are all the notices?
They are, they are in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay, Mr. Bridger?
Just a question, Ryan, do you have anybody that I need to bring over?
I do. If you could bring up Frank Falcone, Jim Kyle again, Eric Holtermann, and then the, the homeowners, Carthick and Sheila Sarmah, please.
Okay.
I think just Eric Holtermann left Claudia. That's, I think we have everyone else.
Mr. Bridger, would you like to summarize your memo?
Thank you, sir. Chairman, Freeman Butler LLC are the owners and applicants of 211 Winant Drive and the adjoining lot at 21 Brearley Road. It's located in the R2 town, zone in the former Princeton Township. They are seeking variance approval for a minor subdivision to permit a lot line adjustment with variance request for floor area ratio, impervious coverage ratio to permit the cover construction of a swimming pool and a pool house, an exception to those ordinance requirements. Properties located in the Russell Estates Cluster Zone. The subject property contains two lots, 21 Winant and where the current house and accessory structures are located and the adjoining vacant lot at 21 Brearley Road. Both lots comply with the bulk requirements of the Russell Estates Cluster Zone. The house at 211 Winant is not complying with respect to the 30-foot maximum height, the existing is 42.3 feet. It exceeds the maximum 12.5% FAR, the existing is 28.3. It exceeds the maximum pervious coverage ratio of 22.5, the existing is 32.7. And it is an exception to the minimum 25-foot parking setback, adjusting is zero. The applicant is proposing a minor subdivision light adjustment that will result in 8,420 square feet of lot area from Lot 28, which is 21 Brearley Road, being conveyed to Lot 29, which is 211 Winant. The subdivision will create two new lots, 7301 and 7302. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 972-square-foot swimming pool, a 1,048-square-foot patio and a 638-square-foot pool house at Winant Road on the expanded lot 73.01. The project will require the following variances. A front yard setback of 25 feet on the corner for the new pool house, rear yard setback of 15 feet. This is all on proposed lot 7302. And the impervious coverage variance. The FAR will exceed the maximum allowable floor area ratio, however, it does, it is reduced because of the subdivision. And the impervious, so the, the FAR is currently 28.03 and on the, excuse me, the new lot 73.01, where we've reduced to 25.5. And the impervious coverage will go down slightly from 32.7 to 32.6. That's with the, the subdivision and the, the lot line adjustment, the 8,420 square feet being transferred to the, the Winant Road lot. And this is a D variance, as you're aware, it requires five of, seven votes. Excuse me. The proposed subdivision results in the existing driveway to 21 Brearley being located on both lots. If the board is inclined to look favorably on this subdivision variance request, the condition requiring that the driveway be moved or removed or moved to a complying location should be applied. If the driveway remains in its current location, an easement would be required. They've requested consideration under both the C1 and C2 for the bulk variances. And that's a synopsis of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bridger? Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for, members of board for hanging out with us tonight. Hopefully, we'll try to get through this as quickly as, as possible. It's, I'm happy to represent the property owners. We have them here tonight. We'll also hear from Eric Holtermann, our architect, Frank Falcone, the civil engineer who did the stormwater mitigation and drew the subdivision. And then finally, Jim Kyle, our planner, who you heard from tonight earlier. So this is a, a, a family here who are kind of the stewards of this historic home that you'll see in this cluster in Princeton, one that is wildly non-conforming just from the nature of the neighborhood. The proposal is to, to add a, a pool and a, a small pool house to the back of the property, but to do a, a lot line adjustment so that ultimately, when the project is completed, the percentage of impervious coverage and the floor area percentage for the existing house will actually decrease. So essentially, we're, we're taking the buildable lot next door, turning it into a size that is actually quite compatible with the neighborhood and essentially transferring some of the development potential from that site, from that lot, onto the historic home lot rather than seek more excessive variances. Now, the numbers that you're seeing are well in excess certainly of, historically of, of, of the zoning. But yes, you'll see, that's a function of this unique home for which the neighborhood is kind of perhaps developed around historically. So we'll have four and a half to five people speaking. Maybe I'll ask if we could have them all sworn in at once by Ms. Casey.
Alrighty, so that's Mr. Holtermann, Mr. Kyle, Mr. Falcone and Mr. and Mrs. Sarmah. Do you all swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you. Like with our other applications, we'll have one package of exhibits that we'd like to introduce as, as A1 this evening. And, and I'd like to start off with, with Carthick and Sheila to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about, you know, their involvement with this property and their, their kind of role as, as stewards really of this unique. uh, and their, their kind of role as, uh, as stewards really of this unique, uh, building, uh, in, in Princeton.
Hi, everyone, I'm, I'm, I'm Carthick. I'll maybe start and then I'll, uh, pass it on to Sheila. First of all, thanks for hearing us at this late hour, so I won't keep you all very long. Uh, you know, I, I moved to Princeton from India when I was, um, I mean, uh, right around twenty-five years ago, uh, for, um, graduate school. And, uh, it's, uh, some of the, uh, most pleasant memories of mine and, you know, Princeton's had played a very, uh, significant part in anything I've achieved in the U.S. And so I always wanted to come back to Princeton at some point. Um, and we feel very fortunate, both Sheila and I, we also have two, uh, two young boys who are now nine and twelve. That we're able to find a, um, really nice home in, uh, within Princeton. Uh, the, our previous, um, owners of the home have done a pretty spectacular job in kind of, uh, preserving this house. And so, um, just as, um, as Ryan had mentioned, Sheila and I feel that it is, uh, our responsibility to make sure that, that we maintain it and preserve it in line with, uh, uh, the history of the home and also with their, with, with the deep care that they've actually taken. Uh, so, uh, thank you again for considering our application and we are very excited to be a, a part of this amazing community.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sheila. Um, and I'll just kind of follow up on what Carthick mentioned. It's, um, really been such a pleasure living in Princeton. We've been in the, in New York City for the past twenty years and as, uh, again, Carthick just said, we have two young boys and being in Princeton has just been a very special experience for all of us. Um, we do feel this responsibility and this privilege and owning this very historic home at this point. And we don't intend, you know, to, to do much to temper with that history. It's such a rich neighborhood and a rich town, um, in that sense. But we did want to add this pool and pool house and at the same time want to be extremely mindful and respectful of our neighbors and of the community. So to that extent, we've been consulting with the experts and professionals to make sure that we can also be very respectful of the environmental impact. We've been planning all the appropriate screenings and plantings and we'll do the needed calls. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that we see there's our responsibility to preserve what we have and anything that we're adding, we'll do it in the most respectful way, um, possible. The other thing that we really enjoyed is getting to know our neighborhood and our neighbors, which is a bit of a challenge during the pandemic. But we have been successful in meeting some of our neighbors, really warm people. Um, and I think in the process of applying to Russell Estates for approval for our plans, we've been able to chat with neighbors about that and, um, we're very grateful for their support as well. So again, just wanted to mention that we're really thrilled to be in Princeton and, um, we thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Well, unmute myself. Uh, thank you, Sheila. Um, I'm putting my, my screen here, what'll be our exhibit A one. Um, uh, the first slide of which I'll just ask, uh, Sheila, I think just noted, you know, the outreach for the neighbors. We've had some examples here of, you know, of some of the, the, the more neighborly letters and, uh, a part of the approval from Russell, uh, uh, Estates. It's kind of a little unique for Princeton to have in addition to, uh, the land use boards, um, approval. But there is actually a, a, a neighborhood process as well by, by private restriction to go through and that's, that's something that, uh, their architect and, uh, Eric Holtermann helped them with. So with that, I, I'd like to ask, uh, Eric, uh, to, uh, be kind of the, the star here tonight, uh, of, of what the design is and, and what, what's be happening with the home here, but, um, I'd like Mr. Holtermann to, uh, you know, unmute himself and also introduce. Now, he's been before this board many times, but, uh, introduce himself and I'll offer him as a expert, uh, architect this evening.
How do, Eric Holtermann from HMR Architects. The, uh, slide shows the location, um, and shows the Russell Estates area, uh, an area that was subdivided, uh, relatively small lots. And part of the reason that the lots are small is that, uh, most of them open up onto, uh, protected common area.
Uh, uh, before we do that, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, any issue? I know, uh, Eric.
No, we would, we'll accept.
Thank you.
Mr. Holloman.
Thought I'd just get that down for the record. He's, he's been here many times.
No problem.
So here you can see the two properties, uh, the front house, the, the, the main house, a large house on a relatively small lot and, uh, uh, the lot directly behind it, twenty-one Brearley Road, a, uh, separate and buildable lot. Uh, here you can see some more of the existing house, uh, historically very significant. Um, I, if you, if, if you don't mind, I'll give you a quick history, built in eighteen ninety-seven, uh, by Moses Ta- Tyler, uh, Taylor Pine for his mother, uh, Albertine Taylor Pine. Um, Albertine's daughter, also named Albertine, uh, and her husband Archibald Douglas Russell, uh, built Edgar Stone for themselves, architecturally similar to this house, um, and, uh, which is now the Hun School. Uh, they also formed Russell Estates, uh, the property and began the Russell Estates, um, area. Uh, Moses Taylor Pine, if you know of his work, uh, his, um, Drumthwackett and, uh, many of his other buildings, including the building at the corner of, uh, Nassau and Witherspoon. He was a, a, a big fan of Tudor style. So I think that his mother had a lot of influence on the style of this house, uh, by the fact that it is, it is not a Tudor house. Um, it, it, as, as Ryan said, the, the house is, is unique. The zoning is also unique that it's a, uh, thirteen thousand square foot house on a relatively small lot. Um, so, uh, that in order to mitigate that, Ryan, should we go on to the next slide? Uh, this shows the area that would be transferred from the rear lot to the front lot. Um, and what that does is increase the size, obviously, of the front lot, but still keeps a rear lot, uh, that is, um, consistent with buildable lots in the area. And I think Jim will talk a little bit more about that, about that later. This is looking at the, the, uh, side entry from Brearley. Uh, this is the everyday entrance, that door that you're looking at there, um, on the, on the, just to the left, uh, that dark brown door is the door that sort of leads into a stairway directly adjacent to the kitchen. Um, so this is really the everyday entrance. Every, and, and then there's a, a bit of a breezeway on the right side, everything to the right where you see that, that red roof start to raise up. That was all added in nineteen ninety-six. Um, uh, uh, again, with a, with a, a, uh, a zoning review process. So there's a garage there and some storage rooms. And then to the right of that is actually where we're looking at adding the, uh, pool and pool house. Uh, there probably won't be any change to this particular view. So this is a little farther to the right down Brearley, looking at the driveway that leads to the garage. Um, you can see the garage on the left, the garage doors, the, uh, roof, that's the, that's the back of the hip roof that you saw before. And the addition then is proposed to be right behind that orange lift, um, sort of running across the back of the driveway and really ending at that right edge of the driveway. Uh, it's designed to look like a garden wall from this side, you'll, you'll see in the elevations. And then a little bit to the right of that is a small enclosure for some pool equipment. But as you can see, the, uh, the, the growth on the side is really quite thick and everything is really quite well screened. The design then, uh, looking at the bottom left, that, uh, that almost perfect square with two garage doors on the right side is the garage that we were just looking at. Uh, to the right of that is the, is the driveway area in front of the garage. We are not changing the configuration of that driveway at all. Um, but then are building the new pool house up against the end of that garage, uh, the end of that driveway. Um, so that the new pool house has a wall that looks again, like I mentioned, a garden wall against the, against the driveway. And then on the other side of it, uh, facing towards the backyard of the house, then is a, uh, some open pool, uh, pool house areas, changing room, bathroom, um, with, uh, walls that sort of pull back, it has a roof over it that connects to the garage so that it's, uh, it's, it's part of the primary structure. It's not an accessory structure. And then on the far right, you can see a small pool equipment enclosure that is tucked into that thick growth of trees there that you saw before. At the very top of the page is a pool, that pool is sixteen by fifty feet wide and that size is regulated again by the Neighborhood Association. Um, so, uh, so we meet their requirement for the, the, the size. Uh, and then to the, uh, left of the pool house, that smaller square is a, uh, small spa. And then the small rectangle, uh, just below the spa. Uh, Ryan, can you point to that? That is right there is a, uh, a, a small outdoor kitchen. Um, everything else, the garage and the, can the, uh, small storage rooms to the left of the garage and then, uh, the line all across the back of the house, all of that is, is already existing. So this is really sort of tucked into the L of the house made by the, the, the kitchen end of the house and the, and the garage. So from the street, um, the wall that you see directly in front of the garage is all existing, that's there already. Everything to the left, that red roof, the main house, all existing. And then what you see in the back is the, the, uh, new wall of the, of the pool house. Um, to the right of that is, uh, uh, some of the planting that is around the, the, uh, pool equipment enclosure. And then where it shows that it's very open to the right of that, I think is because our renderer got tired of putting trees in, but the, 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 it was real thick all through there, um, thicker than is shown on this elevation. So it, here then is another street view, uh, again, with some of the vegetation, uh, you know, sort of shown in plan by a squiggly line. Um, but a, uh, uh, a, a view showing what that wall looks like at the end of the driveway. And, um, so that only that new wall is, is the only new portion that you see from the street. Everything else that you see, the garage and the wall between the garage and the street is all existing. Um, the, uh, the wall is designed, uh, with brick that will match the, of the garage uh, and limestone trim, some planting in front of it. I don't know it would be exactly that planting, but, but, but along, along that, that line of thinking of planting, um, uh, m- muttoned glass above and a, uh, a pergola, uh, tight detail for the roof to tie in sort of as a garden structure with the roof where that, where the roof of the new pool house actually comes in below the roof of the garage. And another, another view of that same, the same wall in between, just to the right of that garage door is a gate then that leads into the backyard and also then leads back into the, back towards the kitchen in the rear of the house. Um, on the, uh, on the yard side, uh, the addition is really quite modern. Um, uh, intentionally not to mimic the style of the house, but to allow it to be quite modern. Um, uh, of course, Morven comes to mind, but, um, you know, the idea here is quite intentionally not to, not to look old back here, but to build something that is very, uh, modern, light and airy. Um, this also shows that around the edge of the pool, there is some pool deck between the pool house and the pool. But again, in order to minimize coverage, uh, the patio is not extended beyond on, on the other two sides of the pool. And another view then, again, where you can see the roof then ties into the garage at the same level that the, um, uh, storage building on the other side of the garage also ties it, ties in underneath that, that garage. That roof is, uh, ten feet above, above grade and the edge of the hip roof of the garage is about twelve feet above grade.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, with that, I'd like to, to pass things over to Frank Falcone, uh, another familiar face, uh, to the board here, but I'll ask him to introduce himself and, give a small amount of background so that we can have him, uh, accepted as an expert, uh, civil engineer here tonight.
I think we can, uh, accept Mr. Falcone.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, just a clarification, Mr. Falcone, you're a surveyor, correct?
Uh, this, I'm a surveyor and a professional planner.
Correct. Okay.
Apologies.
Um, the sketch you see, uh, up before you here. Um, Eric really described things very well. Uh, I will get right into the, uh, mechanics of, uh, this subdivision. Um, you can see that we have introduced a bio-retention basin and that is to mitigate one thousand square feet of additional, uh, lot coverage. We've done some grading. I'll say to the west, we put a swale on the, uh, west side of the proposed pool and directed that, uh, to the vacant lot and to the rear of that lot. So it's not to impact, uh, neighbors. Um, the applicant is willing to convert, uh, the large area in front of the garage to pervious pavement, although not considered in the stormwater cops. We feel that that was a, uh, a generous thing to do. Um, basically, we have a wedge of land from, um, lot twenty-eight. It is eighty-four hundred and twenty square feet added to lot twenty-nine. And, uh, actually, I, I think it'd be good to go to that zoning chart. Um, you see that the existing, um, floor area is twenty-eight point three by adding that eighty-four twenty. It reduces that to twenty-five point five percent on the floor area, although still a variance, it's, it's slightly reduced. The impervious lot coverage, which twenty-two five is allowed, thirty-four nine exists, and that'll go down to thirty-four seven. And effectively, this reduces the amount of future impervious that could be, uh, added to, uh, the vacant lot. But again, it mitigates the, uh, variances on this property. I think Derek mistakenly mentioned some variances that don't exist.
Correct.
With regard to the pool, uh, everything really complies except for the height, the floor area and the lot coverage. The height we can't change, but we are lessening the lot coverage and the floor area ratio.
Thank you, uh, Frank. Let me just go back one more slide, just o- on the right side here. This is the, I guess, the, the trees that are shaded green, those are new trees that will be planted. Um, I know you talked about the, uh, the stormwater mitigation elements to it, but that shows where the new trees are proposed.
Yeah, it, in the area of the basin, uh, the bio-retention basin and the area of the proposed pool and pool house, a total of fourteen trees are being removed in accordance with the Princeton Tree Replacement Ordinance, eighteen, uh, new trees will be planted as required.
Thank you. Um, and, and again, just to, to recap, the, while the, the applicant is actually, is converting this area of existing driveway from regular pavement to porous pavement or, uh, but that is not actually including your calculations. That's on top of the stormwater mitigation that you calculated for the new, uh, surfacer. Is that correct?
That is correct. We, we did soils test to prove ground, uh, permeability, they were successful and we will deal with that if we're, if you're so inclined to approve this tonight, we will deal with that on the engineering, uh, plot plan basis with the, uh, engineering office.
Thank you. Uh, with that, unless Frank, you have any other comments about the, um, lot line adjustment itself? I know we, we i- i- in Princeton, that they are subdivisions, uh, by the same process of creating new lots, uh, and, and more often heard by the planning board, but because of the existing floor area variance, uh, you guys get to hear it here, uh, tonight at zoning. Um, uh, but so Frank, unless you have any other thoughts on the, the drawings, I'd like to pass things over to, uh, to our planner, uh, Jim Kyle.
I have nothing further at this time.
All right. Thanks, Frank. Uh, so, so Jim, I know, uh, you, uh, spoke already this evening, uh, and I, I assume I wasn't paying as much attention for the first application, but I assume you were accepted as an expert, uh, for the first application.
I was and my license is still valid.
Excellent, thank you.
Are you sure?
I love to tell that joke.
You should check before you say that.
Lot could happen in two hours. So, uh, so, uh, Jim, uh, you know, the, the, the kind of the background was laid here for this adjustment and, and, uh, you know, uh, I, initially when, uh, the agenda was being put together, I thought that the last application would be before this one and I would be telling, uh, the board, well, uh, usually zoning board asks, you know, did the owner look to the neighboring property and see if you could pull some property off, uh, uh, to, to, to lessen, um, uh, the impact of a proposed development and usually the answer is, well, we couldn't do that without making that lot non-conforming or, or the neighbor was not interested in selling. Here we have the, the situation where, um, we do have access to that lot. It's unbuilt, um, And the proposal is to borrow or to transfer some of that property to this lot to to mitigate essentially the the impact of both from the from a setback perspective and from to to reduce the floor area and coverage area numbers considerably even from the existing condition. So Jim, I know we do still have a D variance. But if you just kind of talk us through how you looked at this and, you know, especially for such a unique historic home in in a neighborhood like this.
Sure. So I think just to address the slide that you have up here now, Ryan, so this is a comparison of lot sizes. As Mr. Bridger noted in his report, we are creating a lot that is conforming. The minimum lot size in this zone district is actually 10,000 square feet based on the cluster standards. So this lot that we're creating with the adjustment increasing the size of lot 29 and decreasing 28 still results in a conforming lot. This exhibit shows that there are some comparable lot sizes in this area of Russell Estates. So we're creating a lot that's about 0.62 acres and you can see the shaded areas are, excuse me, shaded lots are either a little bit smaller or about that that same size. And just so everybody knows, if 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 we take out the anomaly of lot 27, which is directly to the to the west, which is 1.48 acres, it's a flag lot. If we kind of take that out of the analysis, the lots that you see on the screen right now, the average is about seven tenths of an acre. The smallest lot is 0.48 of an acre. So the 0.62 that's being proposed for lot 28, which will get a new lot designation is kind of squarely right inside the mean of of this. So the average lot size of these 19 lots, taking out the 1.48 acre lot is 0.7. So we're kind of squarely right in, you know, what we see in the neighborhood in general. And I would agree with Mr. Kennedy, it is a rather unique situation. You know, this house is, as Eric had indicated, was built in 1897. There were some modifications in 1996. But it's it's unusual to have a house of this size on a lot that's 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 this small. So it does create some practical difficulties from from an FAR perspective in particular. Even the small addition of the pool house, which is right around 700 square feet, does create the the increased FAR. But again, we've taken the extra step to acquire that additional 8,420 square feet of lot 28 and add it to lot 29 so that we're while we're increasing floor area from a physical perspective, the percentage actually goes down. So we're at 28.3 today and we're decreasing that to 25.5, even with the addition of the pool house. The same holds true for the maximum impervious coverage. 22 and a half percent is permitted in this district under the cluster standards. We have 34.9 existing and 34.7 is proposed, so a slight reduction in that percentage wise overall. So let me just jump in and address the variances. And by the way, just to let the board know, I did review all the application materials. I've been to the site on two occasions, did review the master plan and the ordinance, and we've met as a team and discussed the nature of the application as well. So for the FAR variance, excuse me, we are required to demonstrate both the positive and negative criteria, as Mr. Bridger points out. This is the D variance, but the standard is slightly different. The court in a case called Randolph Town Center v. Randolph Township said that the standards of Coventry Square v. Westwood is what we're going to use here. Now, that is traditionally a conditional use variance standard, but that the court in Randolph Town Center did say that the analysis is very similar. So it's a little bit lighter burden of proof than a D1 variance for a use that is not permitted. We're really focusing on whether the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increase in floor area on the positive side, and then on the negative side, focusing on the effect of the increase in FAR on surrounding properties and reconciling the imposition of that requirement in the first place. Essentially, just reconciling the the variance. So for the positive, I think there is a purpose of the municipal land use law that's promoted by the grant of this variance, and that's purpose A to promote the health, public health, safety and general welfare. As we've described, the grant of the variance here really allows for the construction of outdoor space. You know, given the pandemic, many families have sought to construct outdoor living space to provide for gathering and recreation areas that allow for safe interaction with family members and neighbors. As you heard Sheila say, you know, trying to meet people in the era of the pandemic is is always a difficulty. And this really provides that opportunity. So the design of the pool house, which is the only square footage that's being added to the property, allows for the majority of it to be open. So there are slotting doors across the face that open completely, so the essentially a good portion of that area is open to the outside. And there's also an outdoor dining area that was depicted in the renderings off to that side. So it's really an ideal design, you know, for safe interaction with people in an outdoor environment. And people can feel safer gathering with family members and friends. I also believe the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increase here. And that's really based on the fact that, you know, we've taken this extra step to acquire the additional land that, you know, while we're not compliant with the standards for the zone, it does decrease the the degree of nonconformity here. So we're actually reducing the FAR here by about 2.8%. So it starts to bring the property closer to conformance. But but the way that this property has developed over time and the size of the structure that has existed for some time, it's it's kind of impractical to to reduce that in any meaningful way and then still achieve what they were hoping to here. In terms of the negative criteria and the potential impact of the increase on any surrounding properties, again, it's a relatively modest addition of about 700 square feet or so. The pool house is a one-story structure, it's located a good distance from Barely Road. There's there's also substantial existing screening, as you saw in some of the street views, both along Barely Road and also to the west. So in the aerial photograph that kind of depicted the house that is to our west, there's one that's forward that fronts a wine and drive, but then there's another one that's situated a little bit farther back. That's about 260 feet from the area where the pool house will be. And we also have substantial vegetation on that lot as well as on ours that will really effectively screen this from all sides. And I think it's also worthwhile to note that while we're creating usable space, it is exterior to the main home and it's certainly seasonal. So it won't necessarily increase the living area of the home and be habitable. And I think that's an important distinction. I think overall, given the positioning of the structure and the existing screening that we have both east and west, as well as was noted, we're going to plant additional trees in in some locations there. I think the additional floor area sought for the pool house should not have a substantial impact on adjacent properties. In terms of the intent and purpose of this regulation, the obvious intent is to control floor area. That addresses mass and coverage of a lot. But it's also to better regulate the appearance of structures in relation to available land. So I think, given the location of the structure, it's it's one-story height and the fact we have this existing screening and the additional screening, both to Barely Road and to the west. I I think the increase here resulting from the pool house will not radically alter the appearance of the site. I think, given the nature of the configuration, the increase will not result in an overdeveloped appearance for the site either, because it will largely be screened from adjacent properties. So I think the intent of controlling that mass and coverage and the appearance of the site is still met despite the increase. The other variance that we require is for impervious coverage. Again, we're reducing this by a slight amount. I think this does qualify under the C1 hardship, given the existing configuration of the site and the history of the site's development. So this house was built, as we talked about, in 1897. And the existing configuration in terms of the various driveways and access points to the property really came about when the the balance of Russell Estates was developed. So you you can see in the mid 80s, when a lot of the houses were starting to be constructed around this and Barely Road was constructed. That's really when the access was modified, the garage, you know, things like that. So complying with the standard of 22 and a half percent, given the the history of the way that the site was developed and the age of the home is is difficult. You know, given given the standard and really what's existing on the site. In terms of any impact to surrounding properties, I don't think the increase that's sought will have a substantial impact. First and foremost, the subdivision provides enough additional undeveloped area that the percentage of coverage remains about the same. And while we're developing an area that's not currently impervious, we're balancing it by providing additional undeveloped area. Second, we are proposing attenuation measures for the new impervious coverage, as Mr. Falcone described. And we're also kind of throwing in the bonus of converting about, I think it's about 1,400 square feet of existing impervious area to pervious pavement. So that that's kind of an additional attenuation measure to, you know, help with that. And again, that's not reflected in the percentage calculation, we did not take credit for that. So that would be kind of a further reduction, you know, in fact, of of the impervious surfaces on the site. I think this means there should be no stormwater impacts to surrounding properties, given these measures. And again, we're attenuating the increase as well as some additional. Aside from the stormwater impacts, there is consideration of potential visual impacts associated with the increase. As I noted, the area that where the pool house and the and the pool deck will go is not visible from the street. We also have significant buffering to the west that should address that. So I think in the end, with all those measures, there shouldn't be any substantial visual impact from the increase that's sought. Then in terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, the obvious intent of the standards is is twofold, first to control impervious coverage for stormwater reasons, and then also to ensure that sites don't have an overdeveloped appearance. And I think based on the attenuation measures that we have and the fact that the new impervious area will largely be screened, I believe that those that intent is met of those standards.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any of the board members have any questions of this witness? Okay, let's keep going.
Mr. Kennedy, I had one quick question for you, clarification. Mr. and Mrs. Sarma are the owners then of the LLC?
Correct.
Of the LLC, and that is the owner and applicant tonight.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, those are our witnesses. Happy to answer any questions that.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions of any of the witnesses?
Yeah, I had a question, actually two questions. What about the pervious pavement? What actually are you proposing that to be? I know you're not counting it against against your impervious, but I'm just curious what that is.
I think it would be the pervious pavers to retain the current look. Or possibly pervious asphalt, but I I believe it'll be pervious papers.
And you're going to dig out and put gravel underneath there to make that more pervious than, because it gets compacted and like doesn't function very well generally?
All pervious pavement or pavers to to work effectively have to have at least 10 inches of gravel underneath, yes.
And the bioretention basin, it looks like it's fairly close to the road, what is what is that going to look like?
Well, the reason it's close to the road, the plan show, we tried some soils testing at other locations of the rear behind the pool. And unfortunately, they did not work out well, but the one up close to the road did show excellent permeability. We will have to plant the basin itself. And then we'll probably screen the basin along the street there.
So you're going to plant it with what kind of plants?
Well, it'll have to be wet tolerant plants in the in the basin itself. Probably some red maples, some some holly. There'll be some sort of screened hedge between the basin and the road.
Okay, so more like a rain garden than just a grass, a grass.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One of one thing I'm wondering is you you reference this as a historical house. Do you have any idea how big the original house was? It was built there in the 1800s?
The additions to the house are really only the garage and those storage rooms. And then on the other end of the house, if you noticed on the aerial view, a conservatory at the second floor at the at the all the way at the opposite end of the house, but the rest of it is all original.
Thank you. The other question I have is, is there a architectural definition of a pool house?
Not that I know of.
I mean, you could put bedrooms in it if you wanted to, you could do anything you wanted to do to it and call the pool house.
I I think Mr. Bridger might disagree, I don't know.
Curious, I mean, I like the design, I'm not looking at it, I'm just curious about it.
If you start adding bedrooms, it becomes an accessory dwelling unit or another dwelling unit. So what they have proposed comports with the the ordinance requirement, so it's not susceptible to habitability, but they do have enough space on their property, they could have an ADU there too, so.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Brian.
I think. Talk.
Yes.
I'll try I'll try that unmuted. Could you tell us more about 14 trees that you're removing and where they are being removed from and and how you're going to replace them, what you have in what you're planning?
There there's there are nine trees in the area of the basin that are being removed. They range anywhere from three inches in caliper to 36 inches in caliper. Then there were five additional trees that are going to be taken out the area of the pool and pool house. Again, one is a 36 inch oak and the 24 inch maple and 8 inch fruit tree. So there's a a range, but some of them are substantially large.
Because it's fair to say that, you know, initially, this was designed kind of pre prior to the new stormwater ordinance with other types of, you know, I'll say traditional, but you know, older style, non-BMP mitigation measures. And I know this was really the only place that a a green infrastructure could fit. You know, is this perhaps kind of an unintended consequence of of that change there, you know, when when you were planning this with a with a cistern, for example, that that could have gone in another location, perhaps?
Yeah, that that's absolutely right. What we did was we looked at the trees and we picked an area that was that wouldn't remove any trees, with the exception of the ones in the area of the pool, which would have been actually four trees. But then when the soils test didn't pan out, the the stormwater management requirements changed. And we were forced to look to alternatives. And unfortunately, that area up front was the only area we could find that would beat the requirements.
And the replacement trees?
Replacement trees. We have nine evergreen color Colorado spruce and blue spruce. And then we have nine, a mixture of white oak and sweet gum, all large caliber trees.
So Frank, you might be able to see your 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 key there, I think they're marked here PP, what what type of tree is that one?
The PP's and the PG's, they're the Colorado spruce, they're on the I'll say the west side of the existing dwelling. The larger specimen trees match the trees that are in the rear, they're the the sweet gum and the white oak.
And that's that's LS for the?
LS and QA, yes.
Okay.
I I don't know, are those kind, are those trees that are considered that do well in this in this climate or in this part of the country?
Yes, they are all natives, yes. The the pines, the evergreens aren't, but the the deciduous trees are, they're native. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, any comments? And then we're going to go to, we'll open it to the public.
No, thank you very much, that's that's it, that's for us.
Okay, hearing no other comments from the board, I'd like to open it to the public, anyone who has any questions or comments. Claudia, has any indicated they'd like to speak?
No hands.
No hands.
No hands. Okay. I'll close the public portion and again, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to go into executive session. Have at it. Okay. All right. Any comments, questions from the board or motions? I'd like to say, Mr. Holtermann, that I think this is a very sensitive and well thought out scheme.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree. I think it looks terrific.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think the way you tied it into the existing house, but also made it look individual and more contemporary. I think it looks great, but I do like the way the garden wall effect, I think, is really effective.
You know, we'll give some credit to the local Russell States Architectural Review Committee, who actually worked very well with us and helped us there. And we actually started with something a little bit more modern towards the street. And then worked toward something on the street view that was that became a little more traditional. So in the end, I think it worked out really very well.
Nicely done. Okay. Board members, comments, questions or motion?
I move. We accept their proposal as presented.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we're really setting this one up for a denial. All right, would you call a roll here?
Who's second? I'm sorry, who's second?
Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
And could you, before we vote, could you speak to Derek Bridger's comment about the existing driveway on?
Oh, absolutely. The I think that the plans kind of elevated it to a status that perhaps it doesn't deserve. There's a there's not a curb cut there. It's just kind of a path that was used just to access the field. Certainly, if if the that would be relocated or a actual driveway put in for if if when a house would be built back there. So absolutely. It's not worthy of an easement, certainly, and it's it, you know, from the plans, it looks like a driveway. But if you were to go out there, it's really not that at all. So absolutely, we'll you know, once the once that's sold, we'll we'll prepare a proper driveway for that house.
Good.
Okay, Claudia, do you want to call a roll?
Olson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Beautiful house and a nice scheme.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. It is, in fact, almost ten to eleven. And we have one of the case. Board members, do you want to move forward with that tonight? Or do you want to defer that one or move it till the next meeting?
Take it. You're done with it.
I would agree. Yes, Mr. Bridger?
We have a court reporter. And we need to make sure that she's agreeable to stay the extra time. And there is a surcharge after ten thirty for the court reporter's fee. So the applicant.
We understand that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will try to name that tune in in three notes and try to get everyone home early tonight. I appreciate you sticking around with us.
Right.
The court reporter, okay?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our let me go back to our agenda here. So so our last and final just bear with me one second. Okay. Okay, our last application is seven seven Hamilton Avenue, block twenty six oh one, lot five in the R three zone. Karen, is everything in order?
The notice thing is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Bridger.
Thank you, Chairman. Seven Hamilton LLC are the owner applicants of Seven Hamilton Avenue. They're seeking a C one and seeking variance to permit the construction of a single family home on a lot that does not meet the required lot frontage. Applicant is also seeking an appeal from the zoning officer's interpretation regarding the permitted width of a side entry garage in accordance with section seventeen A four oh three E two A. The subject lots not complying with regard to the required sixty foot lot width, the existing lot width is fifty feet, and the existing subject house is not complying with the minimum side yard requirements, eight existing four point seven feet. The combined side yard requirements, twenty existing fourteen and a half feet, and the height to set back requirement three to one, the existing is one point five to one. Applicant is proposing to construct a new single family dwelling on the lot. The lot does not, as I said, does not have the minimum required with the lot. The applicant should advise if they have requested any adjoining properties, either purchase land or sell their lot to them to cure the deficiency. The variance is sixty feet required, fifty feet is existing. And there's an appeal of a zoning officer's interpretation regarding the width of a side entry garage in accordance with section seventeen A four oh three section E two A. It limits the width of a garage entry to not wider than thirty feet or fifty percent of the overall width of the structure, whichever is less. So the applicant is taking a clever approach here. They've actually built the garage into the body of the house. However, the width technically exceeds fifty percent of the width of the house. The design complies with subsection A, which, you know, it's set back from the front of the house. And it attempts to meet the spirit of the ordinance, but they it exceeds a fifty percent of the width of the main house. In the event that board does not agree with the applicant's interpretation, they give seeker request for a variance for this condition. That's the synopsis of my report. They've requested consideration under the C one and the C two. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I think I'd like to, with regard to the lot with question, I think the applicant had, I guess we can wait till the applicant explains, so the applicant's architect to show that graphic that shows the that shows that I, okay.
I agree.
Okay, and and I have a question. Do we have? Do we have site drawings for this?
There is a they've the applicant has submitted a sketch of what they think the house will like, look like. I don't want to provide testimony for the applicant, but they can address that question. So they do have some drawing.
We do have a sketch that shows.
Oh, no, I saw the I saw the architectural plans and I saw a survey. But are there site drawings? Is there actually a site?
It's kind of a a mix, but they do show the side setbacks and you can see the the rear setback. So
Okay, well, let's 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 proceed because I didn't see
That's a good point.
site plan that I thought was appropriate. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, the third time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Especially thank you for for sticking out with us tonight. As Derek said, one part of of tonight, you'll hear from Daniel Barsky in a second, the principal of Seven Hamilton LLC, the owner applicant here for, you know, the type of lot size and lot width variance that you often hear. And you'll hear about how they approached and couldn't, you know, get the other land similar. Frankly, we probably sold one of the one of the few instances just before here where someone was able to acquire additional land to to cure a variance condition. So we'll have our exhibit that shows that. And then, as Mr. Bridger said, this is an interpretation of one of the neighborhood character elements and 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 an interesting one. I don't know that it's an unintended consequence, but we've kind of sketched out with some of the monopoly houses from the form based zoning project that Princeton went through to kind of help us understand what maybe what the intent was and and an interpretation here. And bearing that barring that a consideration of as a C two, that this is a and a C one, frankly, for exceptional narrowness, that this is a a variance that perhaps is worth granting. So I'm going to share my screen and ask Mr. Barsky to turn his camera on and unmute himself and then introduce himself and we can go on with our presentation.
Think you need to be sworn in, Mr. Barsky. If we could just get your name and your affiliation.
My name is Daniel Barsky and I'm one of the principal owners of Seven Hamilton LLC.
All right. And do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, good evening. I just have a couple of slides to go through for the lot width and lot frontage portion of the C one, C two variance. The property is located on Seven Hamilton Avenue. Behind Hamilton on the property Spruce Street, and it's also adjacent to Hawthorne. It falls kind of mid block.
Karen, I can't see Mr. Bar- Barsky.
Well, I guess either we can see him or he can share his screen.
Okay. Well.
If you want to see me, I can show myself. Let me see.
Yeah.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay.
Hello. Here's just an aerial map of the lot I just described. It's highlighted in yellow. There's an existing home. Like Derek mentioned, it's nonconforming in many aspects, including side yard setbacks, both minimum and combined height to set back. Of course, for the new application, the new structure will conform to all those aspects. But one of the factors that's critical and preexisting is the lot width and lot frontage. And Ryan, if you go to the next screen, there's highlighted in yellow is again, the the lot lines and the dash lines in the middle are the building envelope, which the new construction dwelling will fit within the building envelope, which meets the rear yard setbacks, the front yard, side yard, combined side yard. So actually, the house itself will be more in compliance than it is now. But lot width and lot frontage obviously is a preexisting hardship. Fifty sixty feet required. And the lot is only fifty feet wide. And that's highlighted in yellow in the zoning requirements. So we have two adjacent neighbors. One is lot three and one is lot six. Lot six is an identical sized lot, so it's fifty feet wide by one hundred forty five feet deep. Clearly, that lot does not have enough enough lot width to be able to obtain to make lot five conforming without making lot six even more nonconforming. And the adjacent lot three, which is a double wide lot, is a hundred feet. But, you know, I did speak to that neighbor and on the next screen, on the next screenshot, we sent out a letter, we spoke on the phone, there's the certified letter. We also, again, did we did speak. And this neighbor has no interest in selling any portion of his land or buying our property. So I don't think there's a whole lot to say more about the the lot width and lot frontage variance. And I'll hand it over to Ryan for the little bit more complicated part that he'll walk you guys through.
Well, thank you.
Kennedy, this entire PowerPoint presentation, I assume you want that as exhibit A one?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
So so, yes, you know, you often have to hear about undersized lots and and I don't mean to. You know, there's a there's a process for that and and that's a fairly routine for this board. This one, we certainly found, you know, interesting here. So here is, under the neighborhood character, we are talking about side loaded garages. As Mr. Bridger said, there are two requirements, A and B. We've, you know, laid them out here next to the monopoly house pieces so we can see them. A is the the distance front to back that got clipped here, but A, kind of my cursor here, that's the A distance. How much is that garage setback from the front line of the house? What we're talking today about is B. The side or rear entry garage as part of the principal structure shall be no wider than fifty percent of the overall width of the structure or thirty feet, whichever is less. So we're talking about kind of an interpretation of that. In, I guess, a unique situation, obviously, looking at this monopoly piece, I think there's a contemplation that that side loaded garage was visible or or that fifty percent or thirty foot was fronting the street. That's the part that needs to be set back. But we're going to talk about a different configuration, kind of a mid loaded side yard side garage. So here and our kind of our adaptation of some of the monopoly pieces to try to explain what the what we're talking about here. So the applicant's proposing that a garage that complies with subsection A, and I I appreciate Mr. Bridger's framing it this way, that, you know, we attempt to meet the spirit of the ordinance, and we're asking you to see if we've actually met it with an interpretation of fifty percent of the width of the main house. So on the left here, this is the the form based zoning's explanation of what B is. And to the right is our kind of interpretation, you know, in in monopoly house parlance of what we're doing. There is, in our case, a habitable room in front of the garage. And while the entire red part of this, if that were to be the determination of what B is, the width would be in excess of of fifty percent, it would be almost impossible not to on a lot of this width. Or whether B is the part that peaks out from an otherwise habitable room or other type of piece of the structure. So is is the concern the garage that's actually street fronting or the part of the garage that is seen or visible or poking out of of the structure? So, you know, put another way. Here is, you know, the our form based zoning had the monopoly houses and also had these kind of diagrams. And here we're looking at from on the left here is the 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 case for the A and B measurements that is that is contemplated in the in the ordinance where B is the width of the garage, but the width that you see from the street. It's the width of the garage that is not facing the street because it's side loaded, but the part of it that is exposed to the street. To the right is is our, you know, attempt of kind of showing, well, we think B should be the part of the garage that is exposed to the street if it is, in fact, tucked behind or behind house. As shown here in our attempt to kind of elicit our interpretation here of what B is supposed to be in this situation where we have house in front of the side loaded garage. So this is a sketch that our architect, this is our plan for the home here. This is, we're looking at on the left here, the front facade of the house. And on the right, this is the floor plans with Hamilton Avenue in in the front and the bottom and the house going back along the site. And the way this house is designed, there is a an office in front, and the garage is actually kind of side loaded, but but tucked behind a part of the house and and it's very actually hard to, you know, from from looking from the front, it's hard to see what, you know, that it is a garage. In fact, the part of the the business end of the garage is not this orange shaded part, the thirteen percent of the front facade that is exposed because it's the the doors are tucked in and actually not seen. But in 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 our plan for this house, the side garage, one would would the driveway would would front on Hamilton on the left side of the of the home, you'd pass by part of the house and then turn into the garage that was kind of tucked behind the front of the house, more or less, and only thirteen percent of the facade, which, you know, less than the fifty percent required, would be exposed to the street. Now, you know, put another way, you know, kind of focusing it back to that top down way of looking at how that B factor that's required to be fifty percent or thirty feet. how that B factor that's required to be fifty percent or thirty feet is determined. We we think that this is the intention. We think that B being the part of the garage that you see as a garage from the street, the part of the garage that is exposed or fronts or or otherwise visible to the street in this rear or side-loaded garage. Again, in particular for a narrow lot situation where, you know, this 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 lot barely has thirty, well, fifty-foot lot barely has thirty feet of of buildable interior, once the setbacks are considered. It's tough to not have the entirety of the home be frankly, you know, in a rear or side-facing garage be that part of the lot, right? It's almost impossible to design a house that would comply, whether, you know, with either interpretation. So here, this is the alternate interpretation, right? In this case, B is not the part of of the garage that is exposed to the street, but just the entire width of the garage, whether it's covered by house or not. So this is this is alternative B, I get all this B, even though the that includes the part that we suggest should be considered under the ordinance and the covered or not exposed part of the house, or excuse me, of the garage counting as B. So those are the 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 two scenarios. We're not sure that this was really contemplated when 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 neighborhood character was was put together. And again, in particular for for narrow lots, you know, the the one of the core driving pieces behind a lot of elements in neighborhood character was to discourage front-facing garages. And, you know, a this interpretation for a narrow lot almost makes it impossible to have without a variance any rear or side-facing garage, because no matter where you put it, if it's entirely hidden by home, the width of the garage, just the nature of it being required to be the size to accommodate a car, you know, two cars in the back facing side by side, or just even one car in the side-loading scenario that we're doing, is almost in every narrow lot situation going to max out that fifty percent or thirty-foot requirement. So i- in our mind, it maybe wasn't contemplated, but a very reasonable interpretation would be to look at the part that that corresponds more with what the the neighborhood character was looking to discourage, which was visible garages, the part that you see from the street. Apologies, my lights apparently turn off at a certain time at night and they'll, it's a signal that I should probably wrap things up. But those are the two options. Those are the two interpretations. And and we do feel that neighborhood character that especially looking at the the emphasis on visible parts of garages, the front, the discouraging front-facing garages in particular, or setting them back. This interpretation doesn't necessarily promote or serve that goal. This, we feel that the the our interpretation encourages more hidden garages, encourages more garages that are set back further from the street and less visible. And allows garages in places that otherwise narrow lots would maybe not be able to have a any side or front-loaded garage, or excuse me, side or rear-loaded garages, just due to the the necessity of of width of a narrow lot. Again, alternatively, this is a, you know, Derek referenced it as an appeal. We I I feel interpretation is more appropriate. We don't, we don't mean to to challenge it, but it, you know, we feel it's a right for the board to to put a put its thumb on the scale of which which piece of this they think. Then alternatively, you know, essentially for the reasons that Mr. Barsky went through with the narrow lot situation. This is a perhaps a classic C one scenario for the same reasons that we cannot get exercise. There's no other real way to cite a garage here. You know, the the lot is what it is and and you cannot build more house without seeking a a sideyard setback variance to cover this more essentially. So for that reason, we we feel both that this is a better plan. This is a better approach, considering what neighborhood character was looking for generally and that for the C one reasons that a C one variance would also be appropriate here. So with that, that that's our, that is our our pitch for this interpretation. I hope we framed it in a way that the board can understand. It was a little a little difficult for us to wrap our heads around as well, but I hope some of these diagrams helped.
Well, interesting. I actually, I actually agree with Mr. Bridges' interpretation. As the ordinance is written, because it is more than it represents more than fifty percent of the of the front of the house or the width of the house. But I but I also understand what you're saying, and I think the ordinance didn't contemplate a design like this. So I'm comfortable with it. I do have a question in regards to the design of the house. It looks like the what looks to be like an office, looks to be like a bathroom and a kitchen downstairs, connected to a second-story bedroom. Is that intended to be an accessory dwelling unit?
Daniel, I don't know if you want to answer that. I I think our architect might be waiting in the wings if we want to bring her up, but.
Well, I I think I can answer this question and I I wrote an email to Derek to this extent to say that there is no intention of doing an accessory dwelling unit here. It actually doesn't meet the requirement for a bunch of different reasons. And what looks like is drawn as as a kitchen is not intended to be. So, no. The intent here is for it to be a single-family unit.
Okay.
It doesn't meet the requirements for parking, for it does, you know, there's a lot of different requirements. It doesn't meet for ADU and there's no intent to try to meet those requirements. The intent here is to have a single-family dwelling, but to be able to have some reasonable space for parking. And and so this is, this was our plan for that.
Okay. And my next comment was something I had mentioned at the beginning. Do you have a site plan? You have a survey, but you have a site plan.
You know, we don't, we haven't plotted this onto the site, but it does meet all the requirements. It's within all all four setbacks and within the building envelope, it 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 fits and doesn't trigger any variances.
Yeah.
Any additional variances.
I just want to see how the driveway works. And and the site plan, I think, is appropriate for a request like this. I'm just surprised that there isn't one.
Well, I I from a technical perspective, it this variance doesn't trigger site plan approval. I just mean that at the element of the sketch.
I understand it doesn't trigger. I'm just looking for a site plan. It's 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 very unusual for us to see an application for a house even on a, you know, on a non-conforming lot. And not see a site plan. I mean, it looks this, I mean, I understand what the statistics show, but you're showing, you know, the the house on this on this plan where the sidewalk is right up against the house. I know it's not by the setback, but I just, again, and the driveway, I'd like to see how it sets up on the lot.
Mr. Kennedy, other applicants for single-family homes have been providing the board with this information so that when they want a variance or need variance, so that the board can assess the degree of the variance and how it's going to work on the site. So in the absence of that, it makes it difficult for them, as you're hearing from the chairman, to.
Well, I I I certainly understand that. I mean, I guess from one perspective, the the variances that are being sought are the lot width and size variance and with a request for interpretation. So I mean, I certainly understand what you're saying and.
I I would imagine you know how it's going to sit on the lot at this point. But let's let, let's let your architect explain.
Daniel, may I bring her over?
Yeah, you can bring Marina and maybe you can, if if you go back to the slide, that is the the variance application for lot width. I mean, that that's probably, that's probably helpful. So where it sits is a- again, in a more conforming aspect than where it is now. So it within the dash lines is where the house sits essentially. So up against the front yard setback is where that office space is. Behind it is the garage and it's accessed from the left-hand side from the driveway and behind the garage is the rest of the dwelling unit. So
Have you laid it, have you laid it out on the site? Do you know, do you know how, have you done a drawing that shows this this house configuration on the site?
So my engineer, you know, he hasn't done any type of detailed site plan, but you know, he's made sure that what the architect has designed does fit within the parameters. So
I I believe Marina's, Rabina, our architect's been promoted. I don't know, she may not have anything to add, but since she's here, perhaps we'll swear her in and and.
Hello, I'm here.
Ms. Rabina, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And Mr. Kennedy, you're going to qualify Ms. Rabina or?
Uh, sure. I I know she's spoken.
She's testified before us before. We'll accept her.
All right.
All right.
Um, so I I know you've you've both designed this house and and had some assistance with with the layout, Marina. So if you want to walk the board quickly or see if as many of of the board's, you know, questions with with things that you have done, perhaps could be ameliorated. I appreciate that.
Um, right. I think, Ryan, it would be helpful if you could bring the side-by-side, the two plan views. So I think one clear situation is the lot is non-conforming, its existing condition. We can't do anything about it. But what we're asking for is the interpretation, the previous slide, if you could, please, Ryan.
This one?
Yeah, this one. So I think our interpretation was that, and actually I reached out to Chris Cassenza, who is the original person who wrote the Neighborhood Character Study to get his opinion on the subject. And he said that his understanding was where it says width of the garage. His understanding that was width of the garage face not with the garage itself, which agrees with how we read this. Because if we think about it, that if the if the garage itself needs to be less than fifty percent, then let's say there's an entire house in front and the garage is in the back. Right? If you drive, 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 and then you turn around and the garage is entirely in the back of the structure, because the entire buildable front facing the street is thirty feet and the garage has to be twenty feet, there's no way that this could be less than fifty percent. Right? Then it requires your buildable front of the property to allow you to build a house that's forty feet or larger. And in this particular case, in order to comply with the setbacks, we can only build a house that is thirty feet wide. So whether this house is tucked in the middle or it goes all the way in the back, it will always fail by this definition. So what we tried to do is we tried what we thought was the requirement of the neighborhood characters that you don't see the garage, that the garage is not the dominating feature on the front of the house. And our interpretation was that if we sort of tucked it in the middle, we have an office that links up to the bedrooms above, then it's not prominent. It's more sort of worked in the house and you don't think of it as the garage. Um, so then we end up with the for the portion of the garage that is facing the street being thirteen percent. And that meets, we think, the requirement. Hopefully, I'm, it's a little bit weird.
And Marina, you know, I I know with the actual concept that's put together here, you know, for the, which is really kind of for the purpose, I suppose, of of eliciting this interpretation question. You know, did you look further into laying out the site? I know it.
I have it. It's not done by an official civil engineer. I'm happy to share it. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to share screen.
I just want to clarify the record. I spoke to Chris too, in an effort to get to the bottom of this, Marina, and he said it wasn't considered. So you know, I just want to put that out there. He said they didn't consider this.
They didn't think of this as a.
Exactly. But he didn't say that, he didn't iterate to me that it was the width of the garage that's exposed to the street. So.
Maybe once I showed him the picture, because I had a Zoom call with him and I showed him the pictures like, oh.
Yeah.
Duh. Uh, so am I, I think I'm allowed to share the screen, right? Yeah, okay, here we go. Uh, so I'm not one hundred percent sure if this is the absolutely destined fine.
I'll just ask if we could mark this as as A two.
Okay, but this hasn't been provided to the staff so far, right?
No, this is just the, I guess, in response to the request to to show it, we'd be happy to show that.
This is interesting because it looks by this sketch, it looks like you're sharing a driveway with the adjacent house.
That is the existing condition of this property.
So this is not going to be an individual driveway.
I I'm not sure if Daniel is working on making this an individual driveway or a shared driveway.
No, I I no, it's 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 currently a shared driveway and it's to, and it's gonna, the intention is for it to remain a shared driveway. For, you know, a lot of these properties in Princeton, neighbors shared driveways for thirty years and never actually put anything in writing to record an easement. So I have been in, I've spoken to the neighbor multiple times. We're in agreement that, you know, it's obviously a shared driveway and that, you know, for both of our interests, it should be recorded in an easement as a shared driveway. And so we're in the process of of, you know, having lawyers draw up the easement paperwork and, but we have had multiple discussions on that. So yes, it is a shared driveway and the intention is for it to remain a shared driveway.
Okay.
Can I ask a? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I, this is in the material that we were provided with, correct?
Yep.
Because I I see.
The site plan is not.
Yeah, I see it. It is. I have it.
Yeah, we, did we get this site plan?
Yeah.
This is not, right, this is not an official.
It's cut off. The one that we have is very similar to this, but it's cut off and it doesn't have the the front yard setback on it.
Mine does.
Mine does.
How did I get this?
A one, you're right.
Okay, I didn't, I don't have this, but that's fine. I don't have this drawing. Do we have anything that shows the nature of the adjacent driveway and house location? No.
Uh, it's shown on the survey.
Survey, yeah. Next.
Yes, nine-foot shared driveway.
And me muting muted myself, but yeah, here's the showing the that house next door in the shared driveway.
Yep. Okay, so I guess I I I'm I'm only one person, but I feel very uncomfortable looking at this, not not seeing the new house, the location of effectively the turnaround or the turnout out of the garage and how that relates to the driveway in the adjacent house. That's all. That's my feeling. That's that's why I'm just uncomfortable with this site plan without seeing, you know, without seeing the whole composition. I mean, it's shared driveways are, I guess, yes, they are typical in Princeton, but is an individual driveway probably a better solution for a new house?
Well, I so if if because of the the limitations on the. Well, so if, if because of the limitations on the lot and it's 50 foot wide and with the required setbacks, to bring the driveway off of the shared driveway would be very impactful to what you can actually do on this, on this building lot. And again, the shared driveway has been there for, for decades, so I don't think there's going to be any, there's not any more intense use from the driveway that what's currently there.
It's fine. I'm just giving you my opinion, that's all. And I think a site plan would have been appropriate. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So where are we? Mr. Kennedy, do you have any other witnesses?
We don't. And I ask, you know, if, I don't mean to suggest that this be bifurcated, but obviously the, the questions are first on the more mundane lot area and width question, and then the interpretation question. And then in the alternative, which is, I certainly understand, Mr. Chairman, that's when you get to that alternative is certainly where more site-specific information about the layout of this height of this proposed house would be helpful rather than just the interpretation, you know, in the you know, we had really thought of this as the interpretation kind of esoterically rather than with respect to this particular application.
Mr. Kennedy, are you asking the board then to take two votes tonight?
Necessarily. I mean, I, I that's, that's an option. I would love to hear what everyone's, you know, I certainly understand what the, what the chairman has weighed in on his thought on the, the interpretation question. I don't know if we've heard anyone else's thoughts on that.
Oh, on the interpretation question, in my opinion, and I'd like to hear from other board members, the inter, I believe Mr. Bridges' interpretation is correct. And, and also the, the ordinance as it written didn't contemplate this and, and the analogy of putting the garage in the back that Ms. Rabino mentioned is accurate. So I would support that, that variance. So I have no problem with that. And also as far as the, you know, lot width and depth, it's an existing situation. You've proven that you can't get additional land. So again, those are, in my opinion, all realistic.
And, and just so I, I follow this, it's the, so on the interpretation, it's, it's the full B essentially in your mind, but, but that perhaps you would support the, the variance.
I would. I don't know about the other board members, but I'm still uncomfortable with the site plan. Very uncomfortable. Okay. Anything else before I ask for board comments? All right, so do, do any of the board members have any questions of the witnesses today?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. One is, if we didn't approve this and you couldn't put the backyard garage in, what would you do? You have to have a garage? Could you just have a driveway and just let people park in the driveway?
Steve, I don't want to interrupt, but the, the choice isn't that they can't do it. What they're asking you to do is make an interpretation so they don't need variances. They're telling you, they think the ordinance allows what they want to do with the garage. So they don't need any variances for that. They acknowledge.
But if we don't agree with that variance, then I'm curious what they would do with, how they would design it.
I, I, I think what I'm interpreting the question to be is that, you know, could you, could you design a house that does not have a garage? And, you know, could you park just, you know, essentially surface parking, but behind the setback, you know, is it possible to design a house on this lot? Marina, to see if that's doable. I know the shared driveway may make that tricky, but.
You would have to, you would have to park in your backyard. Right? I mean, because if you need to be, you need nine foot for a parking stall. And if you have to come in from the side because your building lot's only 30 feet of actual building lot, then you have to drive all the way to the back and park in your backyard on some, some paved surface, I guess. Or, am I understanding that right, Marina?
I think the way, my understanding the options would be, if these people had an individual personal driveway, they would be able to park in their driveway. So if Daniel decided that he's going to move the driveway and have an individual driveway, they can park in the driveway. However, the neighbors don't have an option of creating an individual driveway. So he takes his half of the driveway away. The neighbors have no way of complying because they have no width. So they will be left with no driveway. So these people can't park in the driveway because they will be blocking the way for the neighbors to park in the driveway. So their only option is to drive all the way back behind the house and then have a front-facing garage in the rear, which is allowed. But then it will take up a really good chunk of their backyard and create a big portion of unnecessary stormwater generating hard surface. Another alternative, if I understand correctly, is if they push the house back and park in front of the house with no garage, but just turn around and park in front of their house.
Outside of the front yard setback.
Outside of the front yard setback, that would also be allowed. But in my opinion, in no way preferred, right? But that will reduce stormwater generating hard surfaces. So again, you know, tempted if you do, tempted if you don't, right? So that's why we thought that this tucked in allows the continuation of the shared driveway arrangement because we don't impede the neighbors. They can still have a driveway. If Daniel decides, oh, I'm not going to share and pulls out of that deal, the neighbors have no way of getting to their backyard. So then they're going to be back asking for variance, how they're going to get there. Or they will have to turn around in front of their house, which is also kind of unsightly.
I think I agree with, I agree with the chairman that we need to see a site.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask, this driveway that we've been discussing, is that completely on your property, Mr. Barsky?
It's half and half.
It's half and half. Okay. Because I, I thought, Marina, you just said, if Daniel doesn't want to share, then these people don't have a driveway.
They will have half a driveway, but in order to comply with the regulations, they have to be five feet away from the property line. Put in a full driveway and there's no room.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the shared driveway and I understand what, what Marina is saying. And she's right. I mean, if we take, if we try to create an individual driveway here, it may create a problem for the neighbor. I just want to see a site plan. I just think that, that you're this far along. I'd like to see a site plan that shows this house next to the adjacent house.
I think that our interpretation was that we are here for an interpretation of where the garage goes. And how does this front, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, and, and look, if we, if we do get to the, if, if the interpretation is that, as, as the chairman suggests he's leaning, then the, the variance question for this site, you know, is a relevant question and, and I, I prefer not to need to produce material from materials. I certainly understand why that's relevant to to the, just, you know, to, to the variance application in the alternative, but perhaps and that may just, are we, are we there yet though that, that that that's what the interpretation will be? I certainly understand if, if, if it is, then we were looking at the variance and that certainly makes some sense to me. If, if it's, if it's a no on the interpretation. I mean, if it's a yes, then, and perhaps we really don't need materials. We're not really talking about this site for a variance.
I'm just going to make a comment. It's 11:30 right now. If all the board members feel that they're able to completely focus on this, they understand the interpretation question and they don't need any other materials, then, then that's fine for you to vote on that tonight. But if any of you have concerns about this, because it sounds as if really it's the interpretation that needs to get decided first. Because then that dictates your variances. And you've heard from two board members that they kind of like to see some information about the adjacent, relationship to the adjacent property. If that's what they're deciding. And I don't want to speak for any board members. Is, is that a an accurate summary of how you're looking at it, that first we need to decide the interpretation? Then you'll look at the variances now for this lot. Because the interpretation, of course, is beyond this lot. You're talking about an interpretation of the zoning ordinance that then will apply to other properties as well. It's not just this one. It's a general and it's an interpretation that's being made now that this is what it means. So that this application and others will be able to rely on that and say, ah, we're the same as what the Mr. Barsky's situation was. So that interpretation applies to us as well. So it just seems to me that that controls first, then you look at your variances now. Then you can figure out, well, what else do you need now? Board wants to see something else, adjacent house. Okay. You'll come back and you'll provide it. So that's why, given the lateness of the hour, I didn't know if for the board members, you want an opportunity to continue to review this in your mind or whether you're ready to vote tonight.
I'd, I'd like to ask a question of, of Ms. Casey, which is you've just said there are essentially, this will establish a rule. In that presumably rule would be subject to legal challenge because it's not part of the ordinance. Is that correct? In other words, you're saying we're making law. That's what you're saying.
I'm saying that, yes, I'm saying that you are creating an interpretation now of what the zoning ordinance means. That is within your power to do. Could someone else listening to the application tonight say, well, I live within 200 feet and I object to this interpretation? Yes, they could. Sure, they could. Yes. So you, you sort of have two separate, it seems to me you have two separate issues here. You have the interpretation. This applicant, this applicant feels that's appropriate. Will it help them? Yes. Will it help other people? Yes. Then we have what's specific to these folks, which is the width, the frontage. And what are they going to do about the garage then? They want it, you know, if they're going to put it on the side and tuck it away, then, then they need a variance for that. But because at least some board members feel, well, if we're talking about variances, they would like to see some more information. So it seems to me the question for right now is, are you ready to vote on the interpretation tonight? If you are ready, then it seems to me that's first. And then everything else falls into place after that for this property.
But if we were to vote on it as a variance, that wouldn't establish a binding thing for the future.
Correct. That's correct.
But that would have more limited effect.
Correct.
And, and then presumably the council could go and change the ordinance.
Well, I mean, I, I guess they could. We, you know, we, we, we can't speak for what they're going to do, so we, they could do it. Yeah, they could. They could. But for the applicant, you know, tonight, they're asking, could you please make an interpretation? You know, what happens down the road? Well, that, that is what it is, but they're making an argument tonight. And it just seemed to me that that seems to me has to be addressed first. Then everything else falls into place for this applicant. They say, okay, I, I see what I have to do now. I need variances. So.
If we were to vote on the, on the interpretation and the, let's say lot and width and depth, the, the undersized lot, we could still leave open the site, the, the question of whether it's the, the site plan or the, the overall approval of this is up in the air. Do we, by voting up, by voting on the, on the on the interpretation and the lot, the undersized lot question, are we approving the overall project tonight?
You may be, yeah. If you're, if your vote on the interpretation is that this applicant is correct, and that's what the ordinance means, that this type of garage was contemplated, it's allowed and you don't need a variance because you're complying with the neighborhood character ordinance. You know, under your interpretation, you're saying, yeah, that, that's, that's that, that, that's consistent. That's what it means. That's how we interpret it to allow it. Then the only variances they're going to need are lot width and frontage. So yes, you would be disposing, I mean, again, if you had a yes vote on both, you vote for the interpretation, you vote for the lot width and frontage, then that's it. I'm sorry, we have someone else on the screen. Mrs. Ruck, are you?
Oh, yes. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, are you a member of the public, Mrs. Ruck?
I am, but it's getting late and I was afraid I wouldn't get to.
Mrs. Ruck, what's your address, please?
26 Spruce Street.
All right. And do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I live on an undersized lot just behind Seven Hamilton. Half of my property abuts Seven Hamilton. And I am, I have two concerns. One of them is the back setback. I'm really concerned about the, the setback in the backyard. Because the, the rule I thought was 35 feet and looking at the lot with no site plan, I looked at all these papers and I had a very hard time figuring out where the house was going to end. You know, and then there's, then there's a piece of yard and then there's a fence. So I'm concerned about the, the setback in the backyard and also preserving that fence. I know that it, I mean, I'm pretty sure it belongs to that property, but it's a safety fence. It keeps thieves out, animals out, exit routes for people who are robbing. And there's just not enough houses here for everybody to watch what's going on on the street. We've had gropers across from the cemetery. They took the camera down. So I'm concerned about the, the back set in the backyard and also the preservation of the fence.
So maybe I can jump in real quick. I, I'm okay with making it a part of the application that we preserve that rear yard fence. It's in fine shape. I have no intention of taking it down. And to answer the question about the rear yard setback, the 35 feet, we're going to comply with that setback. So we will be 35 feet away from the rear property line. We're not looking for any setback variances. So, yes, we will comply with the 35 feet. We'll be at least 35 feet away. And I'm okay with preserving that fence. I have no problem. I normally do. It's in good shape. So that, that's perfectly fine with me.
Okay, then I'm done.
I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you very much, everybody, for listening to me.
Okay, well, we, all right, let's continue on. So we were, we were what we had, we'll open it up to the public formally as, as after we get all our comments from the board members. Does any, any of the other board members have any question of the applicant at this point?
No, I'm comfortable with voting on the interpretation.
Okay. All right, so. Yes.
I have something here with me that may help if if you interpret what I'm going to read to you as, or, or give it, give it value. I, I have a memo here. It's called the Neighborhood Character and Zoning Initiative Implementation Summary Memo.
Heck of a title.
Yes. You know, I had it in my files. I pulled it out today. It's dated March 9th. It's dated March ninth, twenty eighteen. There's a section called New Provisions for Garage and Driveway Location, Orientation and Access. And I'll just read a little part of it, sort of the opening paragraph. The following new form provisions are intended to encourage principal dwellings where the house itself is the primary portion of the structure visible from the street and relating to the neighborhood homes, while the location, orientation and access of an attached or detached garage is secondary. My interpretation, because it has in there visible that the amount that's visible from the street is what they intended to deal with. But you may interpret it, or you may want to read it yourself and postpone this, but it, it does say that the principal structure is what they want to be visible and the attached secondary is, you know.
Well, in this case, I mean, discussing, and I know it's getting late and I don't want to get into this lengthy discussion, but when you say the principal structure, in this case, the house is reversed.
Well, there's a sec, there's a second floor over the garage. So, yeah, I originally thought that too. You know, this added one room, is that even part of the principal structure? But it's not a one-story, you know, structure.
Yeah. I mean, the principal structure wraps over the garage, but the bulk, but the bulk of the structure itself is behind the garage.
Yeah, and that, I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
You know, it's, 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 it's a very interesting, I'd like to read that. I'd like to get a, maybe I can get a copy of that from you, but I understand, I understand what that says. I still feel that, that that I think that this would meet the intent, but as I said before, I just want to see a site plan. So.
Michael, who wrote that memo? Who's it from?
Unfortunately, there is no name on it. I, I had it, you know, it was paper clipped. Let me just see. No. And that's, that was something I worried about too, but there's, there's no name on it.
Interesting. That's interesting.
But I, I will, I will forward it to you, you know.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, but that's, that's what I found and visible from the street, but.
Thanks.
That's mine.
Okay, so let's just procedurally move forward. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, anything before we open this up to the public, even though the public has already spoken?
Uh, no, not, nothing further before you do that.
Okay, so we'll open the public portion of the hearing up. Claudia, do we have any, any buddy with their hands raised?
There are no hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing and go into executive session. So, board members, well, again, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to say anything before we go into an executive session?
Well, you know, this is a question for you guys, and I appreciate either where you go, even if you don't get to a decision or don't feel comfortable with it. I appreciate just the feedback, especially, you know, Mr. Floyd's thought on this. You know, the other materials that you're thinking about, you know, this is something you guys live with and, you know, even if it's this portion of it is just used to elicit some of that, I think that would be helpful. So I appreciate all your, your thoughts and comments on this.
Thanks. Okay, board members, what do we do?
I would be comfortable voting for this as a variance with the side yard stuff and the driveway as opposed to an interpretation that has wide-ranging implications.
Explain that, explain that, because we're looking.
What I'm saying is that if you accept the sighting of the garage as a variant, as opposed to a correct interpretation, then you limit its implications, if I understand our attorney correctly.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Yeah. Yeah. We're not setting precedent by giving it a variant.
Exactly.
Right. Well, you, by granting a variance, we are assigning a certain amount of precedence to it.
But less so.
But I understand. Yeah, no, I understand. I think there, in my opinion, there are three issues. Lot, undersized lot, interpretation of the zoning officer and in, in my request for a site plan, so we can better understand how this house relates to the other. And, and I, although, although I think overall, this is a reasonable application. I'm not, I'm not objecting to it. I really take exception to the fact that we have no site plan. I mean, you know, we always have a site plan, and especially in this case where we've got a shared driveway and, and there's a lot going on there. So, so that's my two cents worth.
I agree, the site plan, I think, is really required in this situation. It's really difficult to really understand what's happening there without seeing how it all plots out on the site. I think the interpretation on the garage is a, it's an interesting one. I think that what they've done here is, I think to Michael, to that memo Michael read, it in the spirit of that, it sounds like, yeah, the bulk might be, bulk of that might be behind the garage, but from the street, you're not gonna see the garage. So in my mind, I think it kind of does kind of meet the criteria as stated in that memo. So I would, I would probably be not really opposed to it, but not seeing it on a site makes it difficult, I think, for me to move forward.
Board members, I just want to caution you on relying on that memo because nobody knows who wrote it or, you know. It must have been handed out at some point. Michael got a copy of it, but nobody knows who prepared it. So that could be someone's personal thought, that could be the governing body, that could be the folks who helped create the neighborhood character. So if this is your own interpretation, you know, based on how you read the neighborhood char, that's fine, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't pin everything on this memo. Because we don't know what it is.
Yeah, well, to be honest, I mean, before even read that, that, my interpretation was more to that point. Looking at, looking at the way the house is laid out, and it is a very narrow lot, I think they were trying to be creative, and I think the, the overall approach would, would hide the garage and it wouldn't be a problem from that standpoint. It's just the shared driveway and how everything lays out is more of a greater concern for me.
Mr. Kennedy, do you know how many square feet are in the current building and how many square feet you're gonna put in a new one?
Let me see if we have that. Dana, have you decided on the size for the?
Ryan, just, just to be clear, so what Marina designed is what I'd like to do there or something very similar? But the purpose of sharing the design was for the interpretation, right? Normally, if you're giving, if you're going for a lot with variance, I don't believe there's a requirement to share plans. But, so I haven't had any specific calculations. I don't, I do know that it meets the FAR requirement for the bulk requirements in that zone, but I'm not certain what the existing house is. And in my experience using the tax records, a lot of times is unreliable for the current home, so I really can't say with certainty at this moment.
Are you also saying, oh, go ahead, Karen.
No, I was just saying, just to clarify, when the board talks about a site plan, of course, they're not talking about a site plan as that's understood in the context of a commercial property. What they're talking about is, and my, my belief is that I think almost every developer who's come in with a single-family home application has provided sufficient information so that the board understands the implication of the variance, and they understand what's adjacent to it. So if the applicant says, well, you see, I need these variances and I'm designing the house this way, they said, and here's, I'm gonna show it to you. I, it doesn't necessarily mean pages of architectural plans, but it means enough information for the board to understand what happens when they grant this variance. How does it interact with the properties around it? So I, I wanted to point that out because Mr. Barsky's comment is, you know, I don't know why you need to provide it, and he's correct. We're not talking about a formal site plan. So I think probably what we've said to other applicants is, do you have, you know, depiction of the house on the site? You have a drawing of it? That's, that's what we're looking for.
Right, so, yeah, I, I understand. You know, I think what Marina pulled up is what we provide it. If you guys are looking for more details, again, like Ryan said, I'm happy to do that. I, I was hoping that it wouldn't be a variance requirement. I was hoping that you guys would look at it as an interpretation because it is, it is impactful to a lot of people with narrow lots, and there's a lot of them in Princeton. And essentially, what the board will be saying is that anyone who wants to have a garage on a narrow lot has to come in for a variance. And we didn't believe that was in, within the spirit of the ordinance. I know Michael's letter doesn't have whom it was addressed from, but in my understanding, when the Neighborhood Character Ordinance was being written, was that they did not want the prominent garages facing the street, and so that's why we thought we met the intent. So, you know, in this instance, we didn't supply a more detailed site plan. I'm hoping that you guys would consider the zoning interpretation. If you guys aren't ready to do that, I think your next meeting is in a couple of weeks. I can put something together and we can revisit it. So I'm, I mean, again, I do think that the interpretation, of course, it's helpful to me, but I do think it's more wide. Like, it's, it's a wider issue that you guys probably should think about and decide because it does affect a lot of homeowners. And I, again, I do think it does meet the spirit of the ordinance. I think, I believe Derek agrees that with the spirit of the ordinance, he says it doesn't meet the letter of what's written, and he's also accurate in saying that. But everything that we read about neighborhood character ordinance is about the predominant garages. This does not have that. And whether design changes or not, it would still meet the spirit in this instance or in another, so.
Mr. Bridger, if this application is carried by the board, do you have some other background materials you could give to the board to assist them in, you know, reviewing this interpretation issue?
I'd have to check with planning. They would have all the records on that. I mean, we have to rely on the written record that we have, the ordinance. I agree, it meets the spirit of the law. But the board, if they don't agree to do the interpretation, can bring it up in their annual report and advise council if it's an issue that needs to be taken action on it, you know? I mean, we're wasting a lot of time here. You know, we make a choice. We either get a site plan or we vote on the application.
Oh, just a quick question. If, if the, if the interpretations voted on tonight and then I have to come back in for a variance, do I start over? Does it make more sense to carry it? No?
You requested a variance in the alternative, correct, Ryan?
Right.
We did, we did. I, I'm hearing though that the, the board's not comfortable hearing that though, without more information. That's, that's my, my concern. I mean, we want to step through the vote that way, and if that's where we get, we certainly would be willing to come back with, you know, having our engineer draw up a, a, a site sketch.
There are a number of board members that haven't spoken, so we're not exactly sure where we stand on this.
Well, we've got three members who have expressed a desire to see some information about the house's relationship to the surrounding house. That's three. The ones, board members who haven't spoken, you have any input on that? Do you agree with that or not?
I, I guess I agree with that, and I also am just surprised to be asked to provide an interpretation. I feel like that's not ever been in, maybe that is just, it just hasn't come up before. I don't remember it, but I don't feel like I've ever been asked to do that. So just to under, just to kind of suddenly jump into that is, is a little bit of a surprise.
Well, I mean, I think in the past, even the board has asked, been asked to make an interpretation. It's probably been in the context of an appeal from the zoning officers ruling on something. So the applicant has said, well, I'm appealing and I want you to to support me in the interpretation I make. So in this case, the interpretation, yes, I mean, yes, it will impact lots of properties in town. It's not just this one. So I think since, since we're, it's midnight now, so.
We do have four, four people have said they'd like more information.
Correct. So that is the majority of the board.
Ryan, why don't we just carry this on till?
We're happy to, we're happy to get that for you, you know.
Well, let's just, let's submit a site plan and maybe at that point we'll give the board more time to think about the interpretation if they want to vote. I like a vote on it at, at that time. It's yea or nay. And then following that, if it's a no, then for our particular lot, with more information that I will supply within the next week or so. Okay?
Do we, our next hearing is the tenth. So how, when, when do we have to have everything from them? We have to have it by the first, right?
Well, I think what Mr. Barsky said was, he's still looking for a vote from you on interpretation. No?
No, I think he would be on the tenth, but maybe not tonight. Is that right, Dana?
Bring a site plan. So we would need it a week before, if you can do that. I mean.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, I can literally submit it on Monday. And I'm, I'm saying I do want to vote on interpretation, but it doesn't have to be tonight. It's late. You guys want to think about it and, and figure out how you want to, you know, what you want to do with that. Let's vote on that on the next meeting. If you vote no on it, you will have a site plan to vote on this specific variance request on my site. And I, and I will submit it certainly more than a week before so that I can circulate around. You guys can look through it. It sounds like we, you know, all the neighbors' concerns were addressed, so it, it really comes down to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so for anybody who's still listening tonight, the application will get carried to November tenth. There will not be any additional noticing to the neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Derek, just how many cases do we have at the next hearing?
Three or four.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect this, if you have a site plan, then the issues, I, I don't, I, you know, if they want to look for background information for how the neighborhood character ordinance was, they can take that up, but I quite honestly, don't have time, you know.
Okay.
Tomorrow and Friday and.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we'll carry it till the tenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Your motion? To adjourn? Yeah, okay.
Yes. Okay. Good night, all.
Good night.